Anioa, 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 Anioa. Biafra de facto government in the homeland, Anioa State, welcome everybody to Anioa State de facto town hall meeting. With the Biafra Republic government in exile and de facto in the homeland, acting prime minister, Minister Okechukwu Nkere, the finance talking nadu minister of the Biafran people. Biafra de facto in the homeland is inviting you to join us in welcoming the acting prime minister, Honorable Okechukwu Nkere of our Biafran government, to a town hall meeting where you will have the privilege to engage the APM in significant discussions on the liberation of Biafra in the homeland, the recognition of Biafra in Daspora, and the way forward for us to see that Biafra land is secured, defended and protected against the terrorists that is ravaging the entirety of the indigenous homeland. We are so glad to have the Biafra Defence Forces in the homeland who makes part of the de facto government. We are so glad to have all these wings of the defence in the homeland, the Biafra Navy, the Resistance Fighters, the Biafra Air Force, the Dragon Marine, the Obunigwe Squad, and every armed group that are standing with the Biafra Defence Forces to see that the homeland is defended. Anioa is Biafra, Anioa is Biafra, Anioa is Biafra. Let us join hands to see that Biafra land is fully and totally defended. Out of the forests, United States of Biafra, fully created by the Biafran people under the auspices of our indomitable prime minister, Anioa State happens to be one of them. Join us if you are from Anioa, join us if you are not from Anioa, join us wherever you are both in the homeland and in Daspora to make the visit of our prime minister and our APM and the entire cabinet and our supreme leader and the Biafra Defence Forces, visiting and making their presence known and heard in Anioa State a reality. You are all welcome as you join us, we may have Nkwaobi, we may have Edika Ikon, we may have some wine for you. So as you are coming, come with the expectations that there must be something to take home because when you visit Anioa, you will never go back the same, they will move together. Anioa, 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 Anioa. Biafra de facto government in the homeland, Anioa State, welcome everybody to Anioa State de facto town hall meeting. With the Biafra Republic government in exile and de facto in the homeland, acting prime minister, Minister Okechukwu Nkere, the finance talking nadu minister of the Biafran people. Biafra de facto in the homeland is inviting you to join us in welcoming the acting prime minister, Honorable Okechukwu Nkere of our Biafran government, to a town hall meeting where you will have the privilege to engage the APM in significant discussions on the liberation of Biafra in the homeland, the recognition of Biafra in Daspora, and the way forward for us to see that Biafra land is secured, defended and protected against the terrorists that is ravaging the entirety of the indigenous homeland. We are so glad to have the Biafra Defence Forces in the homeland who makes part of the de facto government. We are so glad to have all these wings of the defence in the homeland, the Biafra Navy, the Resistance Fighters, the Biafra Air Force, the Dragon Marine, the Obunigwe Squad, and every armed group that are standing with the Biafra Defence Forces to see that the homeland is defended. Anioa is Biafra, Anioa is Biafra, Anioa is Biafra. Let us join hands to see that Biafra land is fully and totally defended. Out of the forests, United States of Biafra, fully created by the Biafran people under the auspices of our indomitable prime minister, Anioa State happens to be one of them. Join us if you are from Anioa, join us if you are not from Anioa, join us wherever you are both in the homeland and in Daspora to make the visit of our prime minister and our APM and the entire cabinet and our supreme leader and the Biafra Defence Forces, visiting and making their presence known and heard in Anioa State a reality. You are all welcome as you join us, we may have Nkwaobi, we may have Edika Ikon, we may have some wine for you. So as you are coming, come with the expectations that there must be something to take home because when you visit Anioa, you will never go back the same, they will move together.
Good afternoon fellow Biafrans all over the world. Today is 20th day of August 2024 and I am here speaking to you from my base in Finland. I want to inform everyone of you because it has become very imperative as we approach December Convention in Finland, you must know certain things. The declaration of the restoration of independence of Biafra that is to take place on the 2nd of December is targeted at achieving two objectives. One is the delegitimization of Nigeria, two is the legitimization of Biafra. After the declaration, we are going to have a very long battle with Nigeria. But this battle, the good news is that we define how this battle will be fought. We will fight them diplomatically, we will fight them politically, we will fight them internationally, and of course, we will fight them locally. So, the 2nd of December is not after that, some of you will come and say, "Oh, there is still military barracks, there is..." You are going to have them. But let me tell you, if the Vietnamese fought America for years and succeeded in making America to flee, we are ready to fight Nigeria even more than what the Vietnamese did. And we dictate how this particular war will be fought. We are never going into conventional warfare with Nigeria. For the delegitimization, we take a different tone. And what I'm trying to tell you people today is that you must be prepared for a very long years of battle for the legitimacy of Biafra government. It is not something that happened in one day. It is not something that happened immediately after our declaration on 2nd of December. On 2nd of December, we marked the beginning of a very long battle which we are going to show our determination with our actions and inactions. So my fellow Biafrans, all I'm here to tell you this afternoon is for you to understand that after the declaration on December 2nd, 2024, the battle began. And we are not going to stop. If it is going to take us 20 years to fight Nigeria differently than what we did in 67 and 70, we are ready for it. If it takes also 23 years for Taliban to defeat America and they left their land, we are ready to fight even 40 years. Since 1967 to 2024, Nigeria continued to fight us. The only thing is that we have not fought Nigeria until now. And in this fight, we are still defending ourselves. So 2nd of December will mark the beginning of the Biafra liberation. Do not expect something or any magic to happen, we will make the magic to happen. Thank you and may God bless you. Good afternoon fellow Biafrans all over the world. Today is 20th day of August 2024 and I am here speaking to you from my base in Finland. I want to inform everyone of you because it has become very imperative as we approach December Convention in Finland, you must know certain things. The declaration of the restoration of independence of Biafra that is to take place on the 2nd of December is targeted at achieving two objectives. One is the delegitimization of Nigeria, two is the legitimization of Biafra. After the declaration, we are going to have a very long battle with Nigeria. But this battle, the good news is that we define how this battle will be fought. We will fight them diplomatically, we will fight them politically, we will fight them internationally, and of course, we will fight them locally. So, the 2nd of December is not after that, some of you will come and say, "Oh, there is still military barracks, there is..." You are going to have them. But let me tell you, if the Vietnamese fought America for years and succeeded in making America to flee, we are ready to fight Nigeria even more than what the Vietnamese did. And we dictate how this particular war will be fought. We are never going into conventional warfare with Nigeria. For the delegitimization, we take a different tone. And what I'm trying to tell you people today is that you must be prepared for a very long years of battle for the legitimacy of Biafra government. It is not something that happened in one day. It is not something that happened immediately after our declaration on 2nd of December. On 2nd of December, we marked the beginning of a very long battle which we are going to show our determination with our actions and inactions. So my fellow Biafrans, all I'm here to tell you this afternoon is for you to understand that after the declaration on December 2nd, 2024, the battle began. And we are not going to stop. If it is going to take us 20 years to fight Nigeria differently than what we did in 67 and 70, we are ready for it. If it takes also 23 years for Taliban to defeat America and they left their land, we are ready to fight even 40 years. Since 1967 to 2024, Nigeria continued to fight us. The only thing is that we have not fought Nigeria until now. And in this fight, we are still defending ourselves. So 2nd of December will mark the beginning of the Biafra liberation. Do not expect something or any magic to happen, we will make the magic to happen. Thank you and may God bless you.
Alright, welcome everyone. We are officially starting the program. Welcome to Anioa de facto state town hall meeting. Honorable Ekonso, please, who and who have roles to play on your program so that they can have co-hosts?
Okay, uh, I believe, let's see. They will greet everybody, greet everybody. The admin is here, Pastor Paul is here, and our emcee, Mr. Ofem, I think he's in the waiting room, he was kicked out.
Nobody has been kicked out except...
He's back in. Okay, yes, sorry, he's... Etel, uh, okay.
Yeah.
Pastor Ofem, please, unmute your mic and indicate yourself.
And please, anyone coming in as a Biafran, use your Biafran name.
Yes, use your Biafran name, not your...
Don't use name like Kashim Shetima, we will not have such name in the Zoom. Okay, so you said Pastor Paul?
Pastor Paul is the admin of Anioa?
Please, Pastor Paul, unmute yourself and confirm that that is you. Pastor Paul, say something please. Pastor Paul? Pastor Paul, say something. We can't hear you if you're talking. Pastor Paul, are you saying something? We can't hear you. Your network is bad.
It looks like it's trying to network.
You have to go out and come in again to refresh your phone with network.
And Mr. Ofem, the emcee, who will be joining, Minister of Information, please, unmute your mic and identify yourself. I believe you're the Etel 8663LC, I believe.
Mr. Ofem, unmute yourself and speak. Mr. Ofem?
Yes, I'm here, Honorable. A good evening from here, everybody in the house.
Okay, so that is emcee, emcee of... Let me change on that. Hey Pastor Paul, your network is still bad, go out and come in again.
I think it's Zoom now.
Pastor Paul, just leave the Zoom and then come back again.
Am I coming online now?
It's not okay. Leave the Zoom, then come back again so that I can refresh your network. Okay? Who again should be on the, on the program that has something to do?
That should be Dr. Innocent Okafu. Dr. Okafu, are you still there?
Okafu, are you there? Okafu, are you there? Umit yourself, Okafu, if you are there. Okafu, are you there? Okay, I can see Dr. Innocent Okafu. Okafu, unmute yourself and confirm yourself, please. Dr. Okafu, Innocent?
Can you hear me now?
Okay, yeah, we can hear you.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you, I can hear you.
Good evening, sir, good evening, they hope you're honorable there. I salute everyone there.
There were, there were, there were. Okay, Pastor Paul, go out and come in again to refresh your network. Just go out and then come in again, like a refresh your network. Alright, we are going to start now. So, Dr. Okafu, get ready. Dr. Okafu, speaking for the opening prayer.
Ah, yes, that's Dr. Okafu.
Yeah, alright, we start with the anthem now.
Please co-host me, oh.
Okay.
How are you? I'm just joining.
Oh mommy.
Just, Prof, Prof just told me now, I didn't know.
Okay, welcome.
Darlo no?
Bishop, good afternoon ma.
Darlo no?
Oh, nam kado?
Adema. No.
Okay, I'll meet everyone now and as we start with the anthem.
Oh hail me of law. We shall always remember all that perished in the slum of freedom. All hail our heroes. Our prayers shall be heard both day and night. Save them all, best. Hail me of law. All hail me of law. Noah's star shines everywhere. We pray with humility. The Lord and God help us all. All we need is the shield of strength. We strive on our right and beyond. We are the ones who shine beyond.
A minute of silence to the fallen heroes of Biafra and the time starts now.
This meeting is being recorded.
We monitor, as we said earlier, as we continue to fight on to see that the United States of Beaufort is fully liberated. He say, he say, he say... Thank you to everyone, and you're welcome to Anio Ma State Defacto Town Hall Meeting. And we hand over the mic to the MC. MC, often, unmute yourself and take over the mic, please.
Thank you, Honorable, and every other senior member in the house. I send you a chukokka bea, bless us in the name of our Christian.
He say...
We just want to take our opening prayer, and that is going to be done by you, Doctor Innocent Okafu. Are you still in the house, Doctor Innocent? Hello, Doctor Okafu, are you in the house?
Yes, it's in the house. Doctor Okafu, unmute yourself, please.
Please do that and take the opening prayer quickly. Hello, Doctor Okafu, please unmute yourself and take the opening prayer quickly.
Give him some doubt, you know, network is bad. Where is? He will grab the mic. Doctor Okafu. Yes, we can hear you now. Yes, sir.
Okay. Alright. Good evening all. So, kaipépele, okoa, esha, esha forma. Chinekenna, kabineliwe, baba nadiani. Okaka, anua koua biogu. Ofi peti zuwaka, nadimai ne kenei, anyebo mobi Afra. Ano gawa, ne nyeye kenele, buriya faye, nuna se, dalona, jagemma. Nika kisi, doma yindu, weluambo, stata. Ne kenei, nabonyi siyani, bonan dekanono. Ne kenei, nabé, our Prime Minister, no, Samoneba. Ne kenei, naboomo ndi Beaufortani, nendine, oku, ni jesi oku. Na, chowulouwani, ana, ni kenei, ni siwé. Ne kenei, ni sindi, wa ayani, ni ne omunani, ni mofya, baba nadim. Na, si kidoma wa ni nendo. Ajomoya ba na nyoswa, ajomado ba na nyoswa. Anyeja, nyana ta, oneye si koua, mobi Afanya, jakaboua. Omo ma, ya da mi, nyoshi, para, kwebe, siyadi, wa, chota, ka, de, jagalo, chota, ka, jagalo, kuti, boua. Yigidi de, wa, kebo, jamasho. Ebe tiami, lo, kula. Wa, ya, kouza, kwa, si, ogo, brisi, wé, ogo, giri, wa, cha. Ajomoya ba no, mobi Afra, sa, ajomado ba na nyoswa, iba na nyoswa, opi ba na nyoswa. Onu ma, no ba na nyoswa. Oba, ba, ba, foki, ba, ba, tushika, pata, kasa, wa, no, kwa, si, wa, gara, pa, ya, koku, tewa. Opa, mi, fodi, ja, ko, nusapobé, se, di, si. Oneye, chwa, ni, wa, do, oneye, chukoua, da. Oneye, si, no, ma, mena, nyaka, fi, si, baba, ka, we, lo, wé. Yama, na, zo, nyazupi, ya, ra, da, fi, fu, wa, ya. Mule, oku, bo, di, bua. Esé du, kose, de, bere, za, forma, eké, nemi, ni su, munani, chadé, ni, na, dhaspra. Wa, je, si, onu, ni, ne, ge, ja, nyono, fu, fu, Beaufort. Ife, tu, nu, e, meti, ne, kenna, ga, gozimu. Esé du, kose, de, bere, gozi, na, nyomu, ani. Otwaya, ani, ndi, ayayay, ti, ani, chinekenna, nyewike. We, ja, wa, bata, ajopla, wa, ma, wa, ma, mutuzo. Eba, ya, futuzo. We, ja, wa, na, ta, nudo, na, wale. We, ja, wa, noa, esé du, kose, de, bere, za, forma, esé, we, we, kamado, nadim. Ema, rigo, bi, anini, ne, ba, ni, fendi, Beaufort, na, chow, chukunu, na, ki, mezwe, ndaniye. Sani, kè, kè, yubu, chinekenna, kè, kè, nunan, ne. He say, he say, he say...
Thank you very much, Doctor Okafu, for that wonderful prayer.
Thank you.
I will be handing over the mic to our state admin. Are you still in the house now? Doctor, and Pastor Paul. The mic is over to you now to present your welcome, uh, welcome address to the house. Anio Ma State, I'd be present to the house. You're welcome. Are you still having network problems? Anio Ma State, I'd be, okay?
Please, who is putting? Yes, I'm talking, tell me, nope. Wow. Please, put, no, put me, I am muted, I am muted.
Hey, network.
Pastor Paul's network is very bad. Hey. He's supposed to be presenting, Paul, agi, who is Anio Ma State Administrator. Pastor Paul, we are, we can't get you because of network.
Uh, is, I know, I, respectfully, and if Pastor Paul is having an issue, and I... Let's give him a minute, but if he cannot come back on because of the reception, may I just step in a little bit? I've been in conversation with him. I have a rough idea where we might be headed, but let's wait and see if he can hopefully get connection. Uh, while we wait for the state admin to get back, we can go to the next item on the program. So when he's able to pick up with the network, then we can call him up.
Okay, sir. Thank you very much, Honorable Minister. And the next thing we have here now is the presentation of the traditional colonnades. And the traditional colonnade is going to be presented officially by, uh, Chief Doctor Emeka Umen Sofo. Is Chief Doctor Emeka Umen Sofo in the house? Doctor?
Hey.
Do we have Chief Doctor Emeka in the house? You are the minister representing Anio Ma State in religion and traditional affairs. Chief Doctor Emeka, are you in the house?
Please tell him to, to raise his hand. If he's here, he should raise his.
I'll reach him, but I cannot connect, he cannot, it's not connecting.
It's not connecting, that means it's not here now.
You can, if you can get touch with Doctor Okonkwo. Uh, you know, Okonkwo is very close to him. Doctor Okonkwo.
You're here, us.
Yes, Okonkwo, we can hear you.
Hello. Okonkwo is in the house now. Patrick Okonkwo, are you in the house?
Hello. I am in the house. Hi. I'm in the house with that Doctor Emeka Umen Sofo, right? Alright, you can talk.
Go ahead. Go ahead, go ahead.
Edi mojina ka? Omo Beaufort, Anio Ma. Ay, yoji, wo, re, kui, se. Ay, na, si, konye, koro, wa, du, ani. Iyo, obu, na, ka, ini, me, bossa, Beaufort, ya, bo, yu, de, be, koge, shiri. Ay, si, no, si, wa, ya, to, si, se, bu, kati, bu, e. Um, na, si, chumande, na, chwa, ni. Ndi, na, kwa, i, wa, da, ay, omo, wa, na, chwa, i, wa, da. Oneye, koro, wa, ni, ne. Oneye, keni, noba, ka, mo, ali, bu, ni, ne, mo, Anio Ma, ni, ne. Asé, be, te, kora, na, dekanu, chikokora, e, bam. Chikwa, ni, ndoba, na, bambo. Ka, we, omo, wa, ni. Iyo, obu, na, bro, go, na, kano, chido, asé, bu, kati, bu, e. Bro, wa, da, kwe, prete. Ay, na, oku, yekero, wa. Ika, ebana, na, ya, oja, wa. Etan, no, ba, etan, i, be. Wé, poja, we, na, oku, gi. Si, no, yo, ni, kuru, gamee. He say. Omo, ye, zu, ni, ki, ma, e. He say. As far as, ne, di, bu, e, koro, wa, ni, ne. Ay, na, oku, gi. Ay, asé, bi, a. Bi, wa, prai, oja. He say. Na, iwo, chukuka, bea, ma. He say. He say. He say, he say, he say. Allo, press.
Thank you.
It's done.
A Chief Doctor Emeka.
Hey, network.
Network.
On, on your problem.
Hmm.
Hey. Ow. Call it, put in, koba, moj.
Uh, is Pastor Paul, are you back now? Hello?
Paul, come now. Paul. Hey. I'm gonna check on this, she, posi, mani, be, she, finish.
La, ya, utuwe, wa, kete tuwa. Apoletuwa. Apoletuwa. I'm using that, I'm only bringing it out.
Hmm.
Huh? Ah, I didn't.
Okay, honorable ministers in the house, please. Ah, may I simply that we go to the next thing if you are still waiting for.
Hello, what you make, wait, 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 kaya, wa, 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 noa.
Okay.
You are there to gani, pu me fiye keku. Wa, you are there to noaboba le support, maka kebe tui le clair.
Okay.
Ah, pu akampa diawa. Hello, ah.
Mister Finn, he have, he was having this network issue. That if the deputy can go, then it can, go ahead.
Kamiri.
Do you hear me now?
I am in the house now.
Yeah, really nice.
Apostle Lucas, are you in the house? Deputy consign, on behalf of your boss, can you present a welcome address to the house? In your own capacity, so that you can. Move forward, please. The same network problem.
The network is still a shambor. I don't know, I don't, I don't know.
We can't even hear from our deputy also.
Okay, wait now, my yours.
Hmm.
Okay.
Hello, I don't know if I can still be heard.
Secretary, you can do that, please, in your own capacity.
Hello. What is happening to this network today?
Oh, go on, go on.
Go ahead. Your capacity, tell the secretary, please.
Go ahead, oh, go on, we can hear you.
All right, eh, permit me to use a language. Ayenah, ji afachi ukike abiam, chuki kabi me, chuki kabiado. Ya buchinké adediriade, chinko watowa, chinko otaku chinkébi, bezi chioma ne mema. Say na oku etaf, naseke naba ha omuaka biyafra la biyafra. Kanera, ne ukuku makodema, makoganihu, makando, ngandia la biyafra. Ayenanabatawa, ayenediakani wulake, pidanabato niobunatata. Naso nihe niunu okwadwi, ime maka Anyoma State. Na oga bihe gezilizi, oga bihe gagaga, oga bihe gebezilizi. Nandini ne konoha, we biyaya bije, ijue ne layani na Anyoma State. Na chiu kikabiama, ya kwanja lo noha. Ununileje unabatabata, ife na nandeka koga babaya tata, dianaka. Nane mana ife dichiku naaka, onu ni naswane. Abane wulundo, na biyani, letinyanaka, bo samepa. Se ya buke yeme kuele niyebe, kono, ni fani kutato ona noa. Ko obu ni fe na igaba ba tata, ga bu nastena monson kechuka biama, bukwa monson keabo, na ne bo samepa. Bo monson keu niobu na ni ne na mitine, ka ulo phobi, ulo fu monso uelolo, ka la biyafra uegani, uayi naso nonoan. Orani ne biyali je, noan, noan, to Anyoma State, noan. You are all welcome to this great occasion of Anyoma Town Hall Meeting. God bless you all, in the name of Chukwabiam. Isay.
Hello. Say. Isay. Ah, please, honorable ministers in the house. May I seize this opportunity to call for the support of the recent breaking of that traditional kola knot? And what I'm talking about here is, are we going to support that kola knot? That has recently been broken according to our tradition. And we intend to do that county by county. And so any county leader here present in this meeting. We want you to pick the kola knot on behalf of your county and support that kola knot. As a speaker, I want to take the lead. I'm speaking on behalf of Ushmili County. Here in Ushmili County, we want to support the kola knot with 5,000 ajemah. Am I coming out loud now?
Yeah.
Okay, in Ushmili County here, we are supporting that traditional kola with a sum of 5,000 ajemah. And I want any other county head or county representative here in this meeting to do the same thing. Can you support that traditional kola knot, please?
Yeah. Ah. On behalf of my deputy, umu is a chimah. Umu is a chimah county. We are pledging with 10,000 ajemah.
Wow. Congratulations. Is a chimah county, 10,000 in another county here in this meeting. Being represented, Anyocha, Plaha County, are we in the house? Omoka County, are we in the house? There's a chimah county, are we in the house? We want.
Eh, the chimah has pleaded 10,000 ajemah.
Okay, that's the chimah, okay, thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
10,000 ajemah.
In another county. Okay, I think so that we will not waste the time of our right honorable. Or the acting prime minister of Biafa Republic Government in exile. I want to use this opportunity to hand over the microphone. To the honorable minister of our government in exile. He will do justice, he will do the introduction of our acting prime minister into the house. I know that the cabinet has a lot of activities pending. We do not intend to keep the cabinet members here with us forever in Anyoma. And that is why I want to play with everybody. And I want to drop the microphone here from the homeland. And play with my senior honorable minister for information over to you, sir. You do justice to introduce our right honorable to us, so we can hear from him. Minister for Information, sir, over to you.
Thank you, Wacheneke, before APM will take this stage. Honorable Konsu Ripo, your hand is up, we need both hands for the support of Anyoma and the breaking of the kola knot. And the state admin of Anyoma, is he back to recover his network? Because the opening address now is missing in his program. So please, we should always have Plan A and Plan B. So that if network kicks off one person, the second person or the third person can pick up that item to play. Honorable Konsu, over to you, sir.
De wo no, de wo, I greet everybody, okena, as we say back home, ojo guno. All right, um.
Okay.
Our admin Pastor Paul is struggling with network, I can see that. Ah, as his younger brother, and actually his brother, I would just say a few things that I believe he was going to say. And he can correct me or find me later if I said anything wrong. But I know that pastor was going to talk about the significance of Anyoma in the bigger and larger scale of Biafra. Anyoma, the people of Ekumeko. A movement involved in the coalition of Ibo warriors. Today we call them current dead Delta Anyoma. Who use guerrilla warfares tactics to resist the British, who we call the Royal Nigeria Company back in the days. This lasted for almost 31 years, from 1883 to 1914.
Oh.
And everybody knows the meaning of Ekumeko, it translates to. Keep its secret, keep its secret. I personally am very proud today that we made this a reality, no matter how small scale it is. I have watched for quite a while. And finally, Anyoma has been able to present itself. Firstly, I want to thank a few people, and I will start with our APM, honorable Ogenkere, thank you for gracing this occasion. I want to gracefully also thank my minister of information, thank you for all the help you rendered to make this a reality. I want to thank one or two few more people, the admin from Houston, Chinye, thank you for being here. Minister Azdu, thank you for coming to represent likewise. So I will not hold anybody, like I said, I'm not going to talk on behalf of the admin of Anyoma, I only just mentioned a few things we had talked about. But I would also, from here in Diaspora, I would carry that kola. With 150 ajemah. And then for all the mains I mentioned, I will carry it again with another 150 ajemah for the moment. And that is 300 ajemah for the kola from Diaspora here, dalonno.
Thank you.
Dallo.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Eh, we follow on experience, your hand is up, over to you.
Okay, thank you so much, Minister of Information, I hope I'm coming clear.
Yes, we can hear you.
Good evening, my APM, I greet everyone. I greet all the executive of Anyoma and the admin of Anyoma, who she, he is the regional head of their region. He is the regional head. I greet everyone, ah, I am a boy state admin. Ah, I appreciate the handwork of Anyoma. Everybody knows what played in Aloma, and this is the first time Anyoma is conducting their for raising. Ah, they said the journey of a thousand. They make it by the step they are taking now. I call everybody to support them and make sure that they also, they support them in their region. To build their region, their region to stand well. We are expecting everybody, a citizen of the regions, to do the needful by also round them together, round them closeness. To develop their region to be the best. So on behalf of the boyers, I'll pick the kola knot in a sum of 5,000 ajemah. Thank you so much.
Dallo.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, experience. Um, Anyoma State may think that there are not many in the town hall meeting. Or that the crowd is not much, but you don't know the significance of what you have done today.
Hmm.
Yes. So if everyone have been waiting in the name of, because we are few, we are three, we are four, you will not go to anywhere. When the Diana organized a town hall meeting, they were not up to five. They were not up to five people.
Hmm.
When the planning was done, when the idea came up, at the end of the day, the people that grace the occasion, the people that came out. To now make it that they an answer to be RGIA and the de facto in the homeland.
Hmm.
You saw what happened. So every state should not be scared or weird of the fact that there are not many in their group. No, you are many. If you don't come out and call Anyoma, nobody would know that Anyoma exists. So one person need to come and pronounce the name Anyoma, while others will identify. And then come to know that we all need to come and call Anyoma, Anyoma, Anyoma.
Sure.
We continue to take more hands, the floor is still open, Anurika, over to you, floor is open. Come and support Anyoma, come and support the breaking of kola knot and take kola knot back home so that when you get back. You can also present that this is the kola knot that you got from Anyoma Town Hall Meeting. Remember that Nkobe is on the way, Pamwane is also on the way, so prepare yourself. Anurika, your hand is up. Okay, while you are not ready yet, we go to BRGI New York, over to you.
Hey. Nde wo no, nde biyafra. Nde wo no. Hey, Bishop, nde wo.
Oh.
Nde wo no. Nde wo no.
Yeah.
Oh, kande fora Anyoma.
De wo.
Ma wula diyo tuonye, eh? Haye ma wulo nyawosa. Ayenaya. Hey. Nde Anyoma, nde wo no.
De wo.
De wo, de wo.
Eh, de kwanaka matter of one olo. Anyway, I am happy that Anyoma have identified themselves. So I will support Anyoma. And eat that kola. That they brought to welcome our APM and his entourage. I will support them with $50, 50 ajemah. Dallo. Yes.
Thank you.
Eko sa RIP.
Yes, ma.
Uh huh. Um, I will send the receipt to you.
As you can, you can send it to the Minister of Information, mama, dallo.
Eh, 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 Minister of Information again, wow.
Yeah, okay.
Take that responsibility, man.
Okay, mama, dallo.
Uh huh.
All right.
Send it to him and also send one account for him, because we need the account for the Nkobe.
Okay.
All right. Amkwa ma dao, anima tu kuano. Hey, you can, RIP.
Dallo ma.
You owe me that.
No problem.
Yeah, somebody is bugging me, let me see what somebody is trying to tell me here.
Thank you, thank you, all right. We come to, Ivo Chinie, Ivo Chinie, over to you. Ah, sorry, eh, Anurika, are you ready?
I'm ready, I don't know what is happening, no.
Go ahead, go ahead now, we can hear you, Honorable Chinie, please.
You can hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right, good evening, no, great biyafra.
De wo.
Anyoma, nde wo no, 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 unani. Eh, as in Chinake, go se ono, ifu nu melata maka. So ajimo 5,000 ajemah. When I see APM welcome, my Anyoma State, ajim 5,000 ajemah. When I welcome here from Odumebu State, nde wo.
De wo, de wo, de wo.
Yeah.
Honorable Chinie, eh, over to our deputy rep.
Anyoma, nde wo no.
De wo.
De wo, but I'm saying, dallo.
Dallo no. Um, ah, obi demoto, nah. You know, um, ayincha bo, fu yata go, so. Um, thank you for, you know, identifying and coming out boldly to this great occasion. Some people say we are not, we not be evil, we not be evil. You know, but we are all one people. The time of divide and rule is over. Just like, excuse me, just like in, in Ibo land, yeah? Your next neighbor, you might not even understand what they're saying because of different dialects. But we are one people. We answer the same name, when you speak your dialect, I understand what you're saying. And when I speak my dialect, you understand what I say. So the era of divide and rule, it's over. So I'm, I'm using, I'm using 20,000 ajemah. To say thank you for organizing this event and thank you for coming together. And I also want to use 10,000 ajemah. To welcome my APM and to tell him dallo, dallo. And to welcome our bridging entourage who are here. I want to encourage every single biyafra, friends of biyafra, to please remember. That we are one people and very soon we're gonna go home. To our blessed land, a land full of milk and honey.
Hmm.
So dallo no, de jeno, ala no, nde wo no.
Dallo.
Dallo, dallo.
De wo, I'm saying, dallo. I wish to do it.
Sunny, thank you so much, thank you honorable, it comes so rest and peace, thank you so much. Thank you for everybody here, my brothers and my sisters, we are all one people. One love, nde wo no.
De wo.
Nde wo.
De wo. De wo, Honorable Chinie, nde wo.
Dallo.
Good the number, over to you, sir.
Ah, thank you so much, thank you honorable APM, right honorable Masogun Kere. And Minister for Information and the Minister for Anyoma State. Thank you so much and all the cabinets. Thank you biyafra, thank you for coming up, thank you for everything. I say more grace to everyone, I am here to, on behalf of Odumebu State. Um, I am taking the kola knot with 20,000 ajemah. And also welcoming our APM with 20,000 ajemah, that is 40,000 ajemah. And that we paid on tomorrow and sending it to Minister for Information, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Wacheneke, thank you, thank you. Floor is open, pick kola, support Anyoma State. Support Anyoma State, eh, the, the state, state admin, are you back? Has the network allowed you to come in now? Masi, Pastor Paul, let's see, unmute yourself, let's see if you're in. Pastor Paul. Pastor Paul, unmute yourself. Speak up, let's see, if you're okay. We can't hear you, Pastor Paul. Um. Masi Victor, also, over to you.
Oh. Allo. Yeah, good evening from here. Am I called out, please?
Yes, we can hear you, Victor, go ahead.
All right, thank you very much, I welcome you all to Anyoma State. As we have all gathered, welcome you, my information minister, our acting prime minister, and each and every one of us that are here. Those in the homeland, welcome you all, we are all welcome, so we know the reason why we are here. So without wasting much of our time, I'll be supporting Anyoma State with the sum of 20,000 ajemah, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Pastor Paul, try to speak, let's see if your network is okay now. The network took him out, all right, please, the floor is still open, pick kola knot, pick kola knot, support Anyoma. Honorable Konsu, over to you, your hand is up again.
Nde wo no. Well, ah, I see my older brother is having serious problems, our state admin. But either way, as his younger brother, after the 300 ajemah, for, on his behalf, he would give what he wants to give downstream. I'm also going to give 100 ajemah on behalf of our state admin, who has done a wonderful job to make this a reality. I'm actually very happy, well, I mean, I can't believe this has come to a reality. So on behalf of Pastor Paul, the admin for Anyoma State, I would also donate an extra 100 ajemah, that is 400 ajemah at the moment, dalonno.
Dallo.
Thank you, thank you, and we go to. Thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you. All right, let's refresh the house with some numbers. Okay, Minister, come for your hand is up.
Yeah. Okay. And now, how did you see Nico?
There were.
You have picked up courage and we're proud of you. My acting minister. Akai and O'Neil for you for what you're doing. I use fifty dollars. To, to thank everyone of you for the organization and the success of this, um, program. Thank you.
Thank you, ma. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Dalo.
Yeah. All right, we have Pastor Paul. Let's see, we have you back. Pastor Paul, unmute yourself. Go ahead, go ahead.
Hello. All right, uh, if I may, um, I want to call on the, uh, secretary for Anoma. If he's available, he's here, right?
Yes.
All right, please, Biko, as, uh, the admin had instructed, you're gonna give a synopsis of who we are as Anoma people. Our culture, our language, I will relate to the greater Biafran. We've always been part of them. So, it's in your hands now. Uh, I think the admin gave you a beautiful assignment, so I leave it in your hands. Dalo. Secretary, are you there?
Doctor. Are you around? Doctor. Doctor.
Pastor Paul, Pastor Paul, go ahead with your own speech while we wait for Okonkwo. Now that you have a good network, go ahead with your own speech.
Okay, sir. Thank you, sir. Would they win? My echo ministers. And their house. I want to thank everybody who are here, who have made it possible that every one of us will be here. The devil planned, but God has given us victory. So, I say congratulations to each and every one of us. I want to use opportunity to welcome my people here, the Brigi. I welcome every minister that are here. I welcome the local one, the formation minister. You are welcome, sir. You are deputy, Pastor Paul, you are welcome, sir. I welcome. Atoknawa, the A P M of Brafa Land. I want to welcome everybody and everyone that I call and I say, may God bless each and every one of us in Jesus' name. Uh, I want to remind our A P M office is, is star address. In this star address, he said, Jesus from Brafa Land. When he made that statement, and Lord, yes, you are right. I want to put across to what the Bible says, that God, the land filled with milk and honey. And founder that the land filled with milk and honey is the end of the day. So, Jesus, uh, Jesus Christ is from Anoma. Because the land filled with, our land is filled with milk and honey. And that is welcome, so that everybody know what is. And to the reason why they are good warriors. For stopping, for taking so much. Anoma people are brave people. We fought the British, they were the first. Totally, they refuse to surrender. They refuse to say no, and we don't say no to whatever. We believe as a brother that we must make it. And I also want to recall to us, you remember during the war, as of a massacre. How they massacred us because of our belief in the cause of Brasta. And still to be. We are still focusing in that belief in the cause of Brasta that we are one and we believe that each and every one of us. Anoma land filled with milk and honey. And that's it. All of them, what I mentioned most. Basically, to be one of a member in Anoma. So, I want to use the opportunity to, to let you know of what we are facing in Anoma, this security. That we are facing in Anoma. In places like Awajuku, Obulu, uh, La. It's a look who, there are a lot of kidnapped deer in Asaba. In, in Lokuwa, there are a lot of kidnapped deer. Our people don't go to farm. Full of, they are taking over our land. Nobody goes to farm. People are free to go to farm because once you go to farm, they can nap you. That is necessary. I want they can nap you. What they will ask you to do is, you, you will pay as an error. You will bring rice, you will cook, you will buy, and so many other things for them. So, please, I want to beg you, sir. They are talking about one of, of Brafa Land, that Anoma need your help. Anoma need the help of us. Anoma needs us so that we can be more organized. Our people have been there to get that. Most of us, most of them, most of us don't know what it is. Because fear of unknown. If you go to our villages of beyond, they are afraid to come out. If you go to our villages like Sosa, they are afraid to come out because of, on what is happening. So, please, sir, as we are normal, I wanted to presume to know that Anoma are facing serious trouble. Play difficult in our land and we pray that we too in position to commit. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you. S A, thank you so much. Thank you for your speech. Do we have the, uh, state secretary now? State secretary, are you back in? Please raise your hand so we can see you.
Hello, sir.
What is the name? Is he back in the zoom?
Doctor. Doctor.
Doctor Okonkwo, are you back in the zoom? Is it the one using the E T L?
No, E T L is the, oh, second. Is the one that break the collar?
Yeah, I think network has taken him out.
Oh. Now, wow.
Wait, I think that was Doctor Carver. He is with Doctor Carver. Doctor Carver, unmute yourself. I think that was where Okonkwo was. Is Okonkwo there with you? Doctor Carver, unmute yourself, oh.
Yeah, let, I've been trying him, but let me try me again if I can get him. Because network is, uh, a problem here.
Yes, Honorable Love, your hand is up.
Network, they are calling you.
They want no. They want no.
There were, Honorable Love, there were.
Uh huh. Um, I came back for two reasons. Another member from my state. Sent me a receipt of fifty A JMA for Anoma. And both her receipt and mine has been forwarded to Ikunso R I P. On, um, Telegram.
Love, right?
Yes. Yeah, you will see through these things. Yes.
Okay, Dalo.
And the one from E T L. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
So, Dalo, thank you. Dalo, no, Dalo.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma.
Thank you, sir.
All right, uh, let's wait, uh, for some, for some minute while we play some music to see if we can get our A J back. We appreciate everyone making donations. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Do we have Okonkwo back in the house? Okonkwo, okay. Okonkwo, Patrick, unmute yourself. Unmute yourself, sir. Okonkwo, Patrick. Secretary, unmute yourself.
Hello.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Go ahead. Go ahead with, uh, the item that you're supposed to present.
All right, um, I just, I have to leave the place I was. In Doctor, in Mr. First Place because the network gets in shambles. I'm just entering my house now, okay? I have to present the. The Anoma, uh, Anoma states and counties. The counties and the districts. That's what I'm asked to present. I don't know if that is right.
Yes, a brief synopsis of Anoma State. Let us know what Anoma is all about. What encompasses of Anoma, what food do you guys eat, what culture, what language, everything about Anoma, tell us.
It's all right. Anoma is not all that, it's not all that complex as the name indicates. It's the, the land of the good people. And in Anoma, that's where the name is derived. Though the word Anoma is an acronym and it represents, uh, the whole. Four quarters in that not. Uh, the Anyacha people, the Indokwa people, the Eka people and the Ushumili people. So, it's an acronym. If you choose Anoma, Indokwa, Eka and Ushumili. That is I N I, that is A N I O. Then the M A that ends it is the main area. Anoma means Anyacha, Indokwa, Eka and Ushumili main areas. That is what it means. And we are people of same culture. We have same culture. We have, uh, our language is not all that, um, uh, difficult. We have just little difference in accents and in phonetics. That is where the difference comes, but we can hear ourselves when we talk. Anoma is, state is zoned into two main areas, the zone A and the zone B. Then the zone A comprises Indokwa people and all that are in Indokwa Kingdom. And they are made up of, uh, eight counties, so to say. And each county has five districts. And they all speak same language, they speak Indokwa language. But on the case of Anoma, Anyacha people, that is anyone comprising the Anyacha, the. Uh, Habba people, the Ushumili people and then the Omokas, these counties. Our languages differ. There is little in differentiation in the accent and then in the phonetics, but we can still hear ourselves. So, we call ourselves Bender. So we call ourselves Benel Ibo's, as it, as it way I do this. We understand Ibo language and then that is what it is. Our culture is our major, you know, official dress or traditional dress. Our culture, that is white native cloth, and we share same marital culture everywhere. Our culture, our tradition, women and ordinary is same. All around Anioma place. Our food, our staple food is Kasaba, Gare, Yam. And then we have different soup too, to taste. Abono is the commonest thing, we have the bushi, and then we have on sala. All these are the things we eat. And we are loving people. As, like I said, as the name indicates, we are good-hearted people. That's why we are Anioma people. We love strangers, we entertain them. Sometimes we tend to value strangers more than we value our own people. That's why we are still Anioma. So we are part of the Biafra nation. And then story had to that majority of the soldiers in Biafra those days that fought the war and stood for Biafra, were our own people. Not to talk of Zogudam and the rest of them, and that who's there. And Jack Motte, they are from our area. So we are Biafrans. And we are fighting to ensure that Biafra is the reality. Thank you so much.
Dalo. Dalo.
Hello, hello.
Dalo. Dalo.
Yeah, I don't know if I should go ahead to recount the counties and the districts as they are today. If I may have time for that. Hello?
Proceed, proceed.
All right, we have, let me start from the Nduqua area. So we have Ibube Chuku County. Ibube Chuku County has its headquarters at Obiaro. And the fact that it is under this headquarters is Obamata, in Obiaroko, Okozo, Umu Sume, Umu Quata, and the Obionyacha Counties. Their language is Nduqua. Then the second is Ifakam County. Ifakam County has its headquarters at Obi Obeti, Obi Obeti. And then the districts there are Umutu, Obi, Akuku Ono, Abede Ono, and Abede Ogo. These are the five counties there. Their language is Nduqua. Language, that's Okwane language. Then we have Obionma County. Obionma County has its headquarters at Oyugo. The districts are Okabi, Otabono, Mdemili, Olugwe, Etue Titi, and their language is still Okwane language. Then we have the Olooma County, which is headquarters at Amoji. The districts are Uglierman, Isalegu, Osisa, Osar, and Amoji itself. We still have Ota County. The headquarters is at Eziono. That is where the headquarters is. And we had Amoji there, Ezopor, Uchuno, Awela, and Umu Quata. I think we still have Ogetuku County. Ogetuku County is still in Nduqua. We have the headquarters at Akare Titi. The districts are Aetiti, One, Umulu, Adia One, Yedeme, and Akaru Opuru. Then we have the, the seventh one there is Udo Kamak County. Udo Kamak County has its headquarters at Abo. The district's one is Ashaka. We have Owah, we have Ibuku, we have Azaba, and we have Abedini. Their language is still Okwane. The last under that is the eighth county is Ofobi County. Ofobi County is headquarters in Kwale. The district there are Ogume, Emunon, Emu, Kwale Tan, and Abi. See their language, it's Okwane language. Then we now come to Zobi, which is Enyani, around Enyani people. We have Ahaba County. Ahaba County has its headquarters at Asaba. The districts there are Opanam, Oko Ozili, Kebul, Okwe, Amayo Bodo. Their language is Ahaba language, and their culture is same as that of Anioma people. The second, we have the Ibuza, which is Ushumili County, has its headquarters at Ibuza, which is now called Ibusa. And the, the can, the district under it, Amayo is there, Achala is there, Oko Ime is there, Ibusa Town, and Mpanala. Their language is still Ahaba, similar to Anyacha language. The third one here is Anyacha County. Anyacha County has its headquarters at Ogwasukun. The districts there are Ubuluku, Ogwashe, Ubulopiti, Ashama, and Olugwe. Our language is Anyacha language. All right, we still have Anibu County. Anibu County has its headquarters at Apukubie. The district there are Onicha Olona, Akuku, Isela Asaba, Otulu, and Oduzenu. Anyacha is the language. Then we have Enyani County. Enyani County has its headquarters at Ishago. The district under it is Unsoqua, Unsoqua is there, Ishago is there, Edjembe, Adonta, and Ibu Dua Ka. We have Ezetima County. Ezetima County has its headquarters at Isseluqun. The district there are Obio, Isse, Onichuku, Obonpa, and Idumujuboko. Lastly on that, we have Omoka County. Omoka County has its headquarters at Ela. The district there are Ebu, Elatan, Ubolu, Aniwalu, and Okala. These are the, the counties and districts. So we have eight counties in Nduqua area, seven counties in Enyani area. That's what it is. Thank you so much. Hello?
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you. And I will apologize if the map that I'm displaying from the website is not the complete or the updated one.
That is right.
We will check that later, and the website manager will see if it is the updated one. Then we will put it to the website. We understand that after all the maps were fully updated. I think it's not all of them that we updated the website before and as in the individual state, but the complete map, the complete map is okay.
It's all right. The, the, the complete map, the complete map is ready. Each time you call for it, we have it.
Okay. Thank you, State Secretary of Anioma. Today we've been able to understand all the counties, the foods, the dress code, the way of life of Anioma people. So it's good that we actually attended this town hall to also understand the similarities in common with the state of, the United States of Biafra. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. That is awesome. And please, implore, we implore every fully state admins and their executives to always remember on your program when you have town hall meeting, always create an item where you explain about your state. You tell us the cities and the words and everything we need to know about your state. The, the culture, the way of life, and everything, everything. Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome, sir. You're welcome, sir.
All right, we have Honorable Kunko, your hand is up.
Yes, I just wanted to thank our State Secretary. Thank you very much for that detailed synopsis of the Anioma people from Akwacha to Oofen Sala to the whole nine yards. Thank you very much, Dalushine. I were here to support the bigger movement. So for your speech, I would also put another and tack on to what I'm doing. Fifty a gemma, making it four fifty moment. Dalushine, God bless you. Very prepared. Thank you. My brother is happy.
Yes. I, I don't know. I sent a message because, hello, am I still on?
Yeah, you're on, you're on.
I don't know, because I, I couldn't get through my mic to talk when we are supporting the when we are supporting Kola Not. I sent a message. And that message is not received. I think I am supporting the Kola Not with five thousand a gemma.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
All right.
Dalushine.
Okay.
Thank you. Let's take another special number before we go to the next item. Please, the floor is open for everyone to support support the town hall meeting, support A P M visit to Anioma. Our A C Paul, over to you. Your hand is up. Unmute yourself, sir. Go ahead, sir.
I did not pick the collar because of my network. So I want to pick collar with ten thousand. And for my country, Omoka County, ten thousand, that is twenty thousand.
Thank you, thank you.
Wa ka, dalo.
Thank you, thank you.
I hope, I hope.
Yes, yeah.
Yes, we got your message.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. As we welcome our Tokinado Finance Minister, the Acting Prime Minister of the Biafra Republic, government in exile and de facto in the homeland. A P M, you're highly welcome to Anioma State's Town Hall Meeting. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Honorable Minister of Information. And thank you, Admin of Anioma, and all the executives. Greetings to fellow citizens here today. We salute the Brigitte Government and the de facto government in homeland. We salute the Brigitte government and the de facto government in homeland. We appreciate Biafrans that have been doing the needful to show their readiness to exit the contraption, dead man walking country called Zou Nigeria. We are going to find and add more befitting names to describe or call Nigeria. I think Zoo is not even enough. Because in some zoo animal kingdom, some zoo, the animals there are well to, or taking care of. But in the case of this animal, human being kingdom of Nigeria, they don't even take care of their citizen. We appreciate our hero powers. We remember them. Remember our leader, Adume Ojuku accompanied by our leader Philip Ephion. We appreciate their sacrifice. We remember what our leader Philip Ephion said. If this country called animal kingdom, the zoo terrorist country, if they don't treat the Biafran well, Biafrans will rise up again. Here we go. After fifty years, we are back to the same thing that our leaders past fought against. They fought against the terrorist country called Nigeria establishment. They fought hard, so we'll be free. Today, in United States of America, it's Memorial Day. What is the memorial all about? We remember a lot of people that have sacrificed for this country. The fallen heroes, those that have contributed one way or the other. And for Biafran, our only first approaching in just few days from today will be our Heroes' Day, or you call it our Memorial Day, why we remember our fallen heroes, why we remember those before us that stood their ground. If they have not initiate what we are doing today to fight for our freedom, we might just have been like zombie in that country. Where they open our eyes to educate ours the need to fight for freedom. Freedom is very sweet, sweeter than honey. No amount of money can buy someone's freedom. Without your freedom, you can live a normal life. Without your freedom, you will be living in bondage. Like Kenneth Okurunkwa, or you call it Andy Okkeke on the title he used for his movie. Till today, Kenneth Okurunkwa is still living in bondage. Living in bondage from APC to what is these, their useless parties in the zoo, jumping from party to party upon everything he studied as a lawyer. These fools still live in bondage. Without your freedom, you will still be living in bondage like Obi Kubana. And uh, Kubana Chief Prince or whatever they call him. These useless guys are still living in bondage. That is why you see them kneeling down to a terrorist. Fools everywhere. These fools, Obi Kubana, E Money, name all of them. Uh, Chief Prince Money is what, whatever this useless guy call his name. Can you imagine who call himself a Biafran? We kneel down to a terrorist, a co-founder of a terrorist group called Boko Haram. Because these fools are still living in bondage. Because these fools refuse to fight for their freedom. It's not about how much money you make. It's all about how sensible are you. It's all about how sensible you are, are you. Because if these fools are sensible enough, they will realize that their land is being overrun by these terrorist jihadists. Obi Kubana and group, they will realize that their village is about to be taken over by these terrorist monsters jihadist in the name of their religion. These terrorists have colluded with the Nigerian terrorists. That is why in that zoo country, animal kingdom, Babu Republic, Banana Republic. That is why in that country, nothing is working. My fellow Biafrans, open your eyes. Like today, the people of United States of America are freely celebrating their Memorial Day. All over the weekend, people have traveled far and wide. My fellow citizens of Anioma, have you had the opportunity to celebrate Anioma Day? Have you had the opportunity to celebrate your freedom? Have you had the opportunity to remember and celebrate your loved ones? The answer is no. Because we still find ourselves trapped in the hands of this demonic satanic country called Nigeria. It's time, injustice to humanity. Useless country, just as I said yesterday, if I have the opportunity, I will burn it down, we smile. This country, I hate Nigeria with passion. I swear to God, if I have the opportunity, what this country have done to the Biafran people without not even apologizing, without not even trying to work with the Biafran people. The Nigerian terrorist country don't even want to hear our cry. After they have killed over five million of the us accompanied by this useless head of the terrorist British Empire with their cohort Russia, we will never forget. They will pay one way or the other. Everything, this Russia Republic, the British Republic, lay on their hand, everything will work against them until they come and set the record straight, until they come, undo the nonsense they did to the Biafran people. We are God's people. And we believe where we are struggling to liberate our land, our God will help us as well. Our God done that in the time of the Israelites, from the hand of the Pharaohs. He intervened. Ours will not be different. But we must show our God that we are ready. We must let them know we are ready. That is why every day, I will remind us, I will preach the gospel. I'm not the first who started it. Our leader Adume Ojuku and Philip Ephion, they started this journey. And before them, we remember the Okume Kuh warriors who fought too hard not to give Biafran land to the British. We remember our Onduzogu, our Ochukwu. We remember our great warriors, Abba Riot, name it. Who will fight like lion, who will fight like never before. Both the suburb within us and the suburb outside us will never surrender, never give up. Our leader Mazinamdekan once said, when crazy mad people like him join the struggle, he is many of us. All we ask the Biafran people, our Chukoki Khabiyam, our God say, our God say test him and see what he will do. Test us, give us what we need. Give the angel of our land what they need and see what will happen. Just in short period of time, all the enemy in Biafran land will scatter. Uh, who chase them away overnight, from Saludo to Hope, all of them, they will disappear and back. Oh God, Biafran people, just test it, feel it. So you can feel freedom. You can feel how sweet it is to live a happy life. You can feel how good it is to live in a country that have steady electricity. So you can be free to live in a country, you will be proud to carry your passport all over the world, showcase your passport. Test, let's see, let's kick this zoo country out, let us get our freedom. So you can feel it, to live in a country where our money will work. Where our money can buy you something that will take care of your family. Today, in that zoo animal kingdom, it's now one dollar to one thousand five or six hundred naira, even silver is better than naira. What a decayed dying horse. My fellow Biafrans, test your freedom by funding your freedom, supporting your freedom. So you can see how Biafran land will look like. Our infrastructure will be touched not. Dubai will be a joke. We will compete with Dubai. We are not saying we'll be better than any country. What we are saying that Biafran land will be habitable, Biafran land will be better, Biafran land will compete among nations. We have peace and security. To tell you how evil demonic useless shit hole country Nigeria is, look at what they are doing to our leader Mazinamdekan since twenty twenty one. We Biafrans, we keep quiet. Look at how they bully us, they kick us in the ass, they slap us right from back, we are looking at them. The court of the useless country have acquitted our leader. They're supposed to let him go. They force our leg, the legal team or our legal team, they force them back to the same court again. Courts that don't have the right to try him. Uh, Biafran people, let's kick Nigeria out. Let's start boy from the Ohane Zenibo and all that, suburbs among us, governors, senators, all those fake, is uh, Abaribe, all those useless people, scams. They, they are betray Biafrans just to get elected. Do you all remember before Saludo, that Fulani born through it? Do you all remember years ago, before Saludo be, be uh, uh, happened to be the fake governor? In everything in that country is calm, they rigged the election. At that time, he campaigned or he advocate and talked about Biafran. Not knowing that he's trying to find his way to be the governor. My fellow Biafrans, we might be few in number, we might not have the money now, but if I give me, something will happen. Let me refresh our memory back again. Nothing I'm saying today that our leader Mazinamdekan have never said or preached. He still remain our greatest pressure or T-shirt. No exposition I'm making today that our Prime Minister Mazisai Monet one have never done. He still remain the undisputable exposé of our time. Whether you like it or not, that's your business. I'm still going back to the agenda of the Fulani people. I want to remind our people. So we can know that these people have a template. Please today, Honorable Minister of Information, you be my time keeper. Because we have a lot in the tip, indication. So if I keep going, we might be here for too long. Just remind me after thirty minutes, please. And this uh, letter to the National Movement of the Fulham that were distributed to all nothing mosque in Nigeria that was dated in November since twenty nineteen. It reads, they said that the battle is getting closer. That they call on all true Muslim, that this is the time for them to act. That this is the time for the Second Holy War that they started in eighteen oh four. The British stopped them, the British never stopped them. Rather, they collude with the British, because the British saw how aggressive they are. They colluded the British, because they have one common good, one common agenda. That they must regain the territory lost. That it is against Islam to rotate power with infidel, go punish them calling us infidel. That you should forget, or they should forget the election that will only lead to sharing of power. Do you see that these people don't want to coexist with us in their Anioma? My fellow Biafrans, you see, they don't want to coexist with us. That they should think of the kingdom that, that they shall rule forever. That they can change the naughty history, that Os Madam Fordio did it successfully. That they can do it too. That they must take the enemies in the west central and the north by surprise. That is the plot, the plot against Biafrans. Despite, despite their man occupy their homes, forest, street, school, market and act as spies. They encourage themselves by saying that they will suffer in this rain, cold and dust we pour on them, but that heaven will honor them. After the invitable battles, heaven will not honor them anything. They have been promised of eighty-five virgin and that eighty-five, they are praying for more souls they will kill to add to that eighty-five people that don't appreciate anything that God have created. Now the attack on the infidel must be total and overwhelming. Uh, they must begin by instilling fear in them, my fellow Biafrans. If you're one of them, that they have instill fear, wake up. Don't be like Kubana ship priest kneeling down to Boko Haram founder. Wake up! Waking their resolve through kidnaps, brutal rapes, making it difficult for them to farm and subdue them before the war. When you see all these rapes going on in Biafra land today, kidnapping and all that. Do you know now or have you seen that it belong they planned this? Where we are chopping this year, won't be party and all that, these people are planning. While we love chief ten C title, we give chief ten C title for those that don't even merit it. But those that come to kill us like the former impostor that was dead twenty seventeen, that the useless EU, UN, the rest of the world hide after they all know that Bahari is dead. To tell you the wicked world we live in. If you don't help yourself, fight for your freedom, this world will kill you in bondage. Your freedom is in your hand. Your freedom is not given, it's taken. See how wicked war job, evil world we live in. That is why we are children of light who have to set the record straight. Who have to help, to educate the world to let them know what is right to do. They even allow this impostor called Bahari. A dead man and they clone somebody that evil represent Bahari at UN. Do you see how corrupt? Evil empire called United Nation. Evil! Where is the Bahari now? And UN, all of you should be ashamed of yourself, evil people. They allow this dead man that clone himself to come there, parade himself and speak as a living Bahari. Shame to all you people. Biafra, wake up! Do everything you can. You have your jail, you have the money, you have millionaires, billionaires to fund your freedom. If you are looking onto this world, this evil world to help you, you will all die. Heaven, help those that help themselves. Heaven, we help us. And for any country that believe in God, that believe in live and let live, step up. Let us know who you are. If it is the United States of America, step up, do the right thing. Support the children of light, not the children of darkness. They continue by saying that they must take the battle to their home, the homes of the infidel. They must use everything that they have, whether a boy, a lady, a man or woman. That all Muslim of Fulani origin must take this as a duty. Now they were shopping, they are fighting weapons. Everything is a weapon. They are cutter, knives, hands, the trailers, the drive, the tankers with food. They sell the house of the infidel, you guys. Study, uh, study very well and wait for order. Young Qatar, what, what? This is everything they have planned against the Biafran people. Why my people are there partying, E money Obi Kubana spraying money? Go to their village. They don't have steady running water. Go to their village, see shit hole not tied up. They don't have steady electricity. Even the British, Arambo, I call this fool, call uh, what is his name again? Uh, that run for president before. Peter Obi. This useless guy. His village don't have light for some time. These are people that still believe in one Nigeria. People that are still walking against our interest of freedom. And they continue to say, exploit the weakness of the infidel. They are lousy, lack discipline, sleep like fools, love parties like Obi Kubana and E money did. And thus, lack focus mostly on sovereign on an arm. My fellow Biafrans, for how long are we going to keep quiet up like we don't know we are in bondage? It's time for us to fight like never before. It's time for us to do the unthinkable. Do something that you have never done for your freedom. With your advantage position, you can take on a whole family of ten, conquer and kill them if needed be. The battle must be fought in their homeland, the middle bed must be totally crushed. They are few and divided. Never trust anyone in the east and south, not even their filthy Muslims who do everything Allah reject. Get yourself prepared. The battle is near. All you Fulhams, Nigerian terrorists, SSWAP, ISIS, Boko Haram, Utaida. Tineke Unilok. Go punish all of you. Our land can never be overrun. My fellow citizens of Anioma. Reactivate the Okume Kuo. Fellow citizens of Biafra. Stand up! Get up! Not everything you see us come and talk, yell, preach. Our leader Mazinamdekan have done that. And some are still sleeping. Keep sleeping! Until Minier Yegi. Wake up! Find your freedom! We also have uh, wanna break this news to Biafrans. A lot of you all don't know this, but uh, something is happening. Even upon the fight they have brought to us from this uh, Fulani woman called Ngozi Odebese. Ngozi Odebese that have formed a powerly government. Confused woman, lunatic. A psyche a woman. I don't know if this shock you that a woman that wanna be a leader of the free country to be, she don't even know her village. She don't even know where she from. Today she from Annambra. Tomorrow she from uh, Enugbe. Even lie with her age. That woman is over sixty years old. She says she forty-six. Evil woman. She don't even know her local government. That not all. She don't know the Biafra updated map. Honorable Minister of Information, can you show us the Biafra updated map, please? My fellow Biafrans, ladies and gentlemen, my citizens of Anioma, I believe you can identify where Anioma falling. Do you all know that Ngozi Odebese don't even know the map, updated map of Biafra? How will she know? A woman that don't know her village. A woman has sixty-something years old, claimed to be forty-six, don't even know her local government. She says she from Ehusigo in where? Ehusigo is not even in our, our guys know under. Can you, Biafrans, for those of you that are still following her, you know, you are all suburb that are still following Ngozi Odebese, enemy of Biafrans. If you want me to refresh back, I still have all the names and pictures of the followers of Ngozi Odebese. Your mommy, your madam, your Jezebel, she don't know the map of Biafra. She don't know her village. She find it difficult to tell you who her father is. That her father is a chief, Ezekiel chief, what, what, go where? Oh God. God, Biafra, we're gonna have history to talk about, to read about. Time is coming! When we will teach our children that once upon a time, there is a Jezebel woman called Ngozi Odebese. Everything she is doing today will be on Biafra black book. And she there parading herself that she declare Biafra. Five hundred and seventeen delegates re-declare Biafra of which I'm one of them. And over fifty million of Biafrans that have voted re-declare Biafra of which were all of you are one of them. And Biafra is already re-declared before December the second. When we break down the achievements of Biafra by the His Excellency Prime Minister Mazie Simon Ewa, on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, we align everything that qualify or give a country the legitimacy to be a country. Before then, we set everything up. If you all miss the broadcast of December thirty-first, please go back December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Biafra is already re-declared. What we did on this December the second is to let the world know our achievement that we have pronounced the re-declaration of our nation by the votes of the majority of Biafrans saying they want to exit that shit hole damn country called Nigeria. My fellow Biafrans, I want to let you all know that in Biafra land today, we have fewer checkpoints. Anyone that is telling you that in Biafra land today we have checkpoint like we do before is a lie. That person is a saboteur. We have fewer checkpoints. And if you, a Biafran still working against our freedom, if you still wear the uniform of the occupier terrorist, the invaders, bond their ship. If not, you will be the one crying, not us. Because we are taking over our land. We will invade every Nigerian present from our land because the land belonged to us, not to the Nigerian state. We have fewer checkpoint. Kudos to the Biafran Defense Force. Thank you all for your resignation. Your good job. We are proud of you. We encourage every Biafra, keep funding them. Give them what they need so that the world will to continue. Let's give them what they need. Let's show the Nigeria have mad crazy we are to get our freedom. Whoever comes our way, while we are on safe defense, that person will go down. We never invaded Abuja to take over Abuja. We never invaded Lagos to take over Lagos. We never invaded Kaduna, Sokoto, Bahashi to take over what them belong to us. We are defending our land, we defend it. Any country that have problem with that, take us to court. Any country that have problem with that will answer you anywhere in the world. If you have problem with our security, bring your genuine security. Even if they come die for Biafrans, we will celebrate you as well. In our Heroes Day, we remember you. We have a good patron, Maroc that set himself ablaze. We always remember him. We respect him, we honor him. In our Heroes Day, we remember Bruce Maroc. We remember he's a good man, a good young man that set himself ablaze at New York because of the killing of Biafra. If you say our security is not doing what is right or we don't supposed to arm ourselves, whether it's United States of America, whether it's EU, deploy your security, they can come and fight for us. If they will take the bullet for us, we'll give them salute. If not, we will secure and defend our land there. And we still want to use the opportunity to send a message to Navdak. Honorable Minister of Information, do we have any picture of Navdak? Their logo?
Display it on the screen. Go ahead, I will display it.
Navdak! Any shop, any market in the name of Navdak, that Navdak closed down in Biafra land. Seventy-two hours to unlock that shop. It's our land. It's our country. Seventy-two hours. If Navdak fail, we invite you from Biafra land. Navdak, CEO, manager, director of Navdak. Do you know that Biafrans have been raped? Murdered? Navdak, look at this ugly woman. Is she the one in charge of Navdak? Have this useless lady here? Have they come and condemned the killing of Biafrans? Have they come and stop the kidnapping, the raping of our women, children? These people don't know what is coming. They think we are joking. We burn down you all. Have they condemned the atrocity that is committed to our people? When the market of Onisha was set ablaze, not one, not two, not three. Where is this useless Navdak? Where is those that claim they are in charge of Biafra land? They are still the one in power. Where is their fire department? Where is the fire service? Where is this illegitimate governors? They can't provide nothing for us, not our security. Not food. Nothing good come out of Nigeria to Biafra. For that reason, seventy-two hours, Navdak, any shop in Biafra land must be unlocked. If not, from all Biafran territory, every Navdak office must be invaded. We must invade all of you. Invade all Navdak in Biafra land. When you don't care about the people, you have lost the legitimacy to govern. You have lost the right to talk to the people. When you don't care when we have bad roads. When you don't care when none of our seaport walk. When you don't care why we stay in there. Why our mother, our children, our wife go in labor to have Biafran baby? They did all this in darkness with lantern, no light, no electricity. When they need light to have AC, to bring their temperature down, no light. You are left off in darkness. We suffer with this mysterious mosquito bites, malaria or bunch of sickness because of a shit hole country, gutter smelling everywhere. And you all still have the guts to come to claim legitimacy in our land. God punish you all. Navdak must be kicked out of Biafra land. And for all the market traders, stop complaining. Stop whining. What I just read earlier stated, that we instill fear in us. Oh job, they make you shiver, fear. That's why I love this country. Honorable Minister of Information, let this flag show. You know why I love this country? United States of America, I hold the flag every day. United States of America, I hold the flag every day. Do you know the reason why? They are fine like a lion. They have fought over a hundred and twelve war. Eight major war. They mind enough. Biafrans, wake up. If you don't fight, no one will fight for you. Don't be a fool. Wake up. Every Navdak office in Biafranland must go down. Any shop, they lock in Biafranland, seventy-two hours, they don't unlock it. And for all the market traders, step up. Back up your seatbelt. Take your fight to them. They don't feed you. They don't provide no basic amenities to you. They don't know how you live. That shithole country don't have a system of social welfare. They don't have a system that if you don't have food every month, like here, United States of America, if you unemployed, you are entitled to every month some benefits. So you won't go hungry. So you won't be committing crime. So you won't be stealing. Did that shithole country have that for you? How wish I'm in Biafranland. And if need be, if I can be there, I will be there. If I have to be in the fourth country, I will be. Lead by example. Now, that. Navdak, unlock any shop. If Navdak have any problem, it's because of the society. Because the society made people jobless. The society made people commit crime they want to commit. Let them face the nonsense. Let them provide job. Let them stop the insecurity the people they lock up their shop. Are they providing food for these families? Do you want these families to turn to master? My fellow Biafrans, if your shop is locked by Navdak of the zoo that don't have the legitimacy, that don't care about you, be a master. Tell the fight to them. Stop complaining, you see here. Don't let them instill fear in you. It's part of their plan. To instill fear in you. They want to make you weak. My fellow Biafrans, I don't know for how long we'll keep complaining, shouting, trying to say something that will make sense to you. I don't know for how long. They may declare that we instill fear in you and all of you that your shop is locked, they are instill fear in you. You are so afraid. If you don't have peace, if you still live in bondage, what you living for? If you don't have peace, you are like a dead man walking. You need to fight for your freedom so you can have peace. If you don't have peace, you just like a man that don't have peace at his home. A man that don't have peace at his home, but always fight with his wife, spouse, or family. Do you know that when this man get off from work, instead of going home, he would decide to crash somewhere else or hangar somewhere and wait until the middle of the night when the wife is asleep. Everywhere he's quiet, he will sneak inside the house because there is no peace at home. We have millions of Biafrans that want to come back home. Some are scared to come back because they have been instill fear, oh, join you. Boy. Fellow Biafrans, wake up. And the end here we realize if this Craig, this pig in Craig call Asari Dokumbo, if this man will even lecture you that the end here you realize that Nigeria is not for you, the better for you. Former President Goodluck Jonathan said, I'm letting the whole world know about this, both the great president Trump from America and the rest of the world. There is a former president once upon a time, Tall Goodluck Jonathan, one of the errand boy used by the British government. Out of that time, he's so stupid and because of being idiotic, he refused to do what is right. After his tenure, he feel more comfortable and he decide to speak out because these people have been instill fear in him. During his presidency, he can't speak because he is afraid. And when he start speaking out, he said, Nigeria is never a country. This world is not my world. Honorable Minister of Information, which we have this clip. It's always good to educate everyone, so. So I'm quickly forget. Goodluck Jonathan said Nigeria is not a country. And Nigeria is a scam, that's what it is. Nigeria is never meant to be a country. The people are not even try to make it work because we are not one people. We don't have one common goal. Why the Biafran people are there partying, rejoicing? They have Biafranland, they are good people, they work hard. And from the Funan, Fulani agenda, they are there planning cool how to overrun Biafranland, take over our land. That tells you the intent of what we found ourselves. Nigeria is not a country. We start from this market here called Obor Uhu Market. If anyone know Obor Uhu Market, pay attention. If this market is not on sale, everyone that lock this market will be whole responsible. And Navdak, pay attention, wherever there is Navdak office in Biafranland. The de facto government of the Biafran people have activated that all Navdak office must be invited after seventy-two hours if they lock any shop in Biafranland. It's our land, they don't detect to us. They don't help us. They don't help keep our land clean, no benefit. And they have the gods to chase our people from their shop. And every Biafran, every Biafran that Navdak lock your shop, you know what to do. Take the fight to them. Don't be weak. Stop complaining. If you can't do it, fund your freedom. Fund those that can do it for you. Throughout these few days, I always talk and talk about my dear loving country, United States of America. I love United States of America, the same way I love Biafran. Please, I'm sending message to White House again. Whatever I'm saying here, I say in White House too. In Capitol Hill, I tell them the way it is. Senators, Congress, I, nothing I'm speaking here that I haven't told them about, that's what it is. As the leader of the free world, United States of America need to start doing the writing and stop this game. United States of America need to condemn the terrorist country called Nigeria. United States of America, as Britain, as Nigeria, I know that United States of America and Russia are not in good time. Ask them, why did they kill Biafrans? What happened to over five millions of Biafrans? I know they know what to do. As the leader of the free world, we Biafrans know their power. We Biafrans appreciate them for what they're doing. And we Biafrans need them to step up, especially in West Africa. They need to come and take their rightful place. While Russia is closing in, China is closing. And I will let you know, my fellow Africans, if you are rejoicing about Russia, Russia is fair to play. Russia is give and take. Don't be happy today, tomorrow you crying. Use what happened in Syria as case study. When Russia people offer the Syrian what they want, change of regime and all that. But at the end, Syria is like Saddam and Gamora. Everything there is destroyed. Over thousands of whom have turned to rebels. Don't let that play out in West Africa. And we please urge the United States of America, step up, do what is right. As the British are being kicked out of Africa, France are being kicked out of Africa. As the leader of the free world, our dear President Jared Donald Trump, you know what is right? Do it. And for the Biafran people, we'll be fighting together with the leader of the free world to fight against terrorism. United States of America, you are welcome anytime in Biafranland. We all work together and make this world a better place. Together, Biafran and United States of America, we fight these terrorists in the Sahel region. My fellow Biafrans, I want to let you know we are on the right track. Be strong. Don't give up. I used to have a favorite wrestler called John Cena. John Cena always have this slogan, don't give up. Don't give up the fight. If somebody come to burn you down, burn that person down, it's safe to face. Then if that person don't want to be burned down, let the person get the ass, get a, get a hell out of your way. My fellow citizens of Anjuma, where are my warriors? Where is a Kumaku? Get a full name eh? Ferney Raju Kohane. And for those that still are, still fighting against us, saying we're not doing much, you did not give up, give us anything to fight with and we reject it. For those in the fake media, blogging, contact creators, saying we don't do much. They are not seeing what we are doing. Have you give us a Jima or a J and we refuse it? Do you give us any logistic? I get this here, I will, will me, Abu Iago Kijeni. Did you provide anything? We have a lot of territory to cover. Biafranland is massive. And to cover all the territories, logistics is needed. The men that are doing the war, don't forget they have families. Don't forget they need to eat proper food, good diet for that matter. So they can get a good energy and strength. Don't forget, they also need logistics. What do you expect them to carry on this duty with? If you are not supporting, instead of contributing news on social media, claiming you are fighting Biafran, while you are actually sabotaging what we are doing. Break people every year, sabotage us. If you are not contributing towards our freedom, get a hell out of here. But this freedom and key house will will get it right. And for Nigerian government still holding our leader Mazi Namdikan, you all know he did nothing wrong. He only ask for freedom of his people. Did you dialogue with him and he refused? When he asked for dialogue to give conditions, what we need in Biafranland, that stupid country turn it down. Our Prime Minister Mazi Simon Ebro, before he start the journey, he even used to campaign for one Nigeria. But when they find out Nigeria is a failed country, they say, huh, no. They can't continue to support a country that kill Biafrans. Just like me, I will die fighting for Biafran. If this all I achieve, so be it, I don't care. I'm not getting younger, getting older. I want history to remember my good job, my good deed. Today, we have a celebrating Memorial Day. Remembering not the evil ones that betrayed America. Remember the good ones that in America good book. On May 30th this year, we'll be remembering our heroes. When we remember our heroes, we don't remember the evil ones. If the ones that have fought for our freedom, won't you be happy to be in Biafran good book? Just like in No Distant Time, Time Is Coming. When we ratify and ratifiable every of our documents, any of our documents that have the evil Jezebel or Rabose and her group, whether it's our charter, whether it's our constitution, everything, we delete all their name, we get the matter straight, right? Because our children, our generation, we don't want them to read a book with dark memory. Evil people can never champion discourse. When they pick up our books to read about us, they can look at it and look at genuine people like Mazi Namdikan, checkmark. Prime Minister Mazi Simon Ebro, checkmark. Honorable Minister of Information, Parawa Soni, checkmark. Deputy Minister, Rafa, Chair of the General, checkmark. All the Brigitte Cabinet members, the genuine, give them check, check, checkmark. Honorable Bishop Comfort, the one of the best bishop we have in Biafran. In any, checkmark, good, good. We don't want to read about evil people in our book. I get daily rubbish here. Correct here, this rubbish, it are handling. We must get it right. Put the right names here. Biafranland must be clean and white and whiter than snow. We must correct everything, correctable. We want a brighter future, a brighter history that we can memorize, that we can have a Memorial Day for, that we can have a hero day for. We can't have no Memorial Day or Hero Day for, for this evil N'Gose Rabesey, Chetima and our group. No way. I still call on the United States of America again, I will keep be calling them. Please cut this message, send it to the White House that the Biafran people need them. That the Biafran people ask the United States of America to step up. We appreciate the hard work of the congressmen. We appreciate the hard work of the congressmen and women, the senators. And let me tell you people something, Biafrans. I always discuss this with our lobby and some members through of the Congress. I appreciate them whenever I have meeting with them. And I let them know how powerful they are. Do you know that one vote of a member of Congress of United States of America can bring peace to the whole world? Do you know that one vote of a senator or a member of the Congress can cause World War III? Let's say for example, we have a vote going on tomorrow to recognize Biafra. And when you come to the Senate floor, you have forty-nine, forty-nine, Republican forty-nine, Democrat forty-nine. And we need one vote. That one senator, that one congressman that you have no respect for, can be the game changer. That is why all members of Congress from senators, they are all very important. We respect them, we love them for their service, we salute them. We appreciate their work for humanity. We welcome them to work with the Biafran people. They will never regret it. I will still be having more meeting with senators and congressmen and women. Wherever you see a senator or a congressman of the United States of America, appreciate that congressman and senator. Tell them job well done. And remember, every member of the Congress of the United States of America, they don't only work for America. They work for the entire world. Because any decision they make at Washington, it affect the whole world. That is why I'm proud, American. That is why I'm proud of Biafra. We believe when America lead, the rest of the world we follow. The first time I met with the Speaker of the House, Mike Johnson, after I speak, he took some word from me. And after that, he made it clear, when US lead, the rest of the world we follow. Those recent days, what happened in Syria? Trump uplifted sanction. All the sanction imposed in Syria was uplifted by J President Trump. And the whole Syria starts singing praises of him. And remember, years ago, the same Syria burned the flag of America. The same Syria condemned America. But today, they sing praises of America because of how powerful they are. America need to intervene in Africa. They need to intervene and do the right thing and stop this game. We depend and we believe in them. But for we Biafran people who fight, who liberate our land, we want to be recognized. We want to join the fight to fight against terrorism worldwide. God bless the United States of America. God bless Biafra. Together in Biafra, we can make Biafra better again. Together in Biafra, we can make Biafra stronger again. Together, we can liberate Biafra. Together, we can make this world safe and better again. Thank you. Ndewo.
Ndewo, APM. Ndewo. 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 Ndewo.
Life is a process. No matter how you go about it. Mazi okechukunkere, omalecha okere. The Biafran Republic Government Exeter Finance Minister is homely campaigning for global Biafran financial support for the purpose of Finland Convention, Biafran Defense Forces and Redignation-related activities. I appreciate all Biafrans who have been supporting our liberation movement. I also urge everyone to massively support more than ever, especially in these critical times. Oh, my fellow lovely great Biafrans, let's come together and support our Prime Minister Mazin Simon Eba, who is currently working tirelessly to hand over our freedom to us this year, twenty twenty-four. Obonye, obonye, kembia kaza lo no. Freedom is coming, yeah, yeah. Yo, 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 yo. Mazi okechukunkere. Salute every Biafran specially. Yeah. Okechiyo.
Okechukuka ma.
Okechukuka ina yo no, 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 no.
Okechukuka ma.
Onyama na kiti, kiti ba kulo onu.
Okechukuka ma.
Welun titi chukuka sebele.
Okechukuka ma.
Okechiyo.
Okechukuka ma.
Masi okechukunkere neke lunu.
Okechukuka ma.
Okechukuka ina yo no, 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 no.
Okechukuka ma.
Okechukuka ina yo na nyasi.
Okechukuka ma.
There is no magic to progress and success in life. Life gives back what you give to it. It takes a man who believes in himself to create wealth. So keep working hard and never lose hope in what you believe in. Ayakata. Life is not easy. Sigh. Make it take and judge oh. I want to use this special opportunity to recognize his great team of Megu Juku. I can't also forget General Philip Effiong. Okama Dalosaw. Kamche taba no men on the ground. Umoma o kobiwe. Anya na foakolo. Ebon. De facto government in homeland. She's a nika. Special recognition to every Biafran who have been supporting from Tegwan. May him continue to flourish you in your different endeavors. He says. Mazin Nambikanu, oh amadite, who are no Biafra. Egadi. The Prime Minister, obato biere. Okechukunkere, simokelekiyo, wokama.
Okechiyo. Okechukuka ma.
Okechukuka ina yo no, 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 no.
Okechukuka ma.
Onyama na kiti, kiti ba kulo onu.
Okechukuka ma.
Welun titi chukuka sebele.
Okechukuka ma.
Okechiyo.
Okechukuka ma.
Mama biko yo bole sa.
Okechukuka ma.
Okechukuka ina yo no, 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 no.
Okechukuka ma.
Okechukuka ina yo na nyasi.
Okechukuka ma.
Ayole, ayiga kono leya role no. Ovi bole, che taba na lubo fo. One plus one is two, two plus two is four, you know. Onyepuru chiyusaka no, 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 no. Joy, joy, joy. Don't give up. When eh, it's so close.
It's so close. Okechukuka ma.
Never you give up, no, no, no.
Okechukuka ma.
Believe in your dreams, brother.
Okechukuka ma.
Never you say, no, 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 no.
Okechukuka ma.
Okechukuka ina yo no.
Okechukuka ma.
Never you down your faith, no, no, no.
Okechukuka ma.
Keep your head up, keep on fighting.
Okechukuka ma.
Ayaba la, ayaba la, yo, yo.
Okechukuka ma.
A big shout out to Mazi okechukunkere. I salute you, my Biafran, Mazin Simon Eba. Life is sweet when you're patient, ah. The greatest shout out goes to the media team, great talent. Ndewo.
Thank you, APM. Thank you. Anjoma State. Thank you to everyone here present. Rich and Fury, Johann Isar, over to you.
Um, can I be heard?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right. Thank you very much, Honorable Minister of Information. I greet the, oh, I greet all the honorable cabinet ministers of the Biafran Republic Government in exile, as well as the de facto government in homeland. Special greetings to our leaders. Right from the days of Dean Ordinigunduku, Philip Effiong. May their memories be a blessing to us and all the memories of the fallen heroes. Greetings to our father, Rafa Wazurike, for the rule and the part that he played. And to our leader, Onyeduma Zimnandikanu, who is leading from the front today. And to our beloved Prime Minister, who is explaining our case to the international community, His Excellency Prime Minister Simon Eba. Special greetings to you, our darling acting Prime Minister, Your Excellency Okechukukire. Thank you very much to all the Biafran Defense Forces, the triple star General Chief for Defense Staff and all the commanders or the generals. Special greetings to you. My name is Rich and Fury and today I'll be supporting from Urubu Isoko with Fifty Cent. And in addition to that, I would also want to encourage eh, Biafrans by saying, there will be a time in our lives when we will remember the prize we paid. There will be a time in our lives when we will remember the heroes that fought. But when I got a chance, I'm gonna tell you what I know about this world we living in. It may seem so beautiful from where you are. It may look so innocent in your eyes. But let me tell you, it's not the same with Biafra. Freedom comes to those who go out and make it happen. It will come to those who wait. Biafran stand up. Freedom comes to those who go out and make it happen. It will come to those who wait. Listen to me. We can sit here and teach you everything we've been through. At the end of the day, it is our lives. Freedom comes to those who go out and make it happen. It will come to those who wait. Biafran stand up. Freedom comes to those who go out and make it happen. It will come to those who wait. We just have to take it. Our freedom is in our hands. We just have to take it. Our freedom is in our hands. Freedom comes to those who go out and make it happen. It will come to those who wait. Thank you very much, Ayini Makea. Thank you very much, APM, for your inspiring speech.
Thank you, thank you, thank you very much, Duh.
Thank you, Rich and Fury, for that wonderful number. Thank you. Eh, Honorable Lico, so over to you, Johann Isar.
Yes, yes, uh, I, I couldn't let a speech like that go unnoticed, uh, to our honorable APM. Honorable Gitchinkere, thank you very much. That was a riveting, inspiring speech. I thank you very much. Uh, I'm gonna support that speech with another fifty Ajima. Cap off for the day with five hundred Ajima total. But to follow on the back of my brother from Isoko, Irobo Land, I will try. Let me see what I can do. I will say, okechiyo. Ojogo muna. Okechiyo. Okenne omunao. Okechiyo. Jessica omunao. Dalu, thank you very much, APM, man. God bless you all. It's been a beautiful day. I may be on the back ship for a little bit now, but I want to just say thank you to everybody that came to support us here, man. God bless everybody. Ndewo.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Ndewo, we have a Lenov. Lenov, one meet yourself. Over to you, Lenov.
Good evening, our honorable APM. Good evening, our Information Minister. Good evening, everybody that have been making the dream of Biafra to come true. Pastor Vam Vam Vam, I greet you. Uh, the SA of, um, uh, Anjoma. Greetings. I want to say that this is how to do it. Uh, the first thing is ability to create awareness and making people know exactly what you are doing. Uh, I thank God for the wonderful, uh, rendition or the message delivered by our APM today. It is awakening. So, I want to say before that I will be supporting with the two thousand AJ to make that support, then I want to say that on the thirtieth, the twenty-ninth and thirtieth, but thirtieth is the day. We are celebrating the Biafran Heroes Day. And we want to make it a memorable one. And eh, at eh, the Minister of the Internal Affairs, uh, there's a program that is coming up. And I, it will be a good thing that all the state administrators will do something, create awareness. Let the state you're coming from know that something is happening about Biafra. If there's anything you can do that day, meet eh, uh, just contact eh, uh, Wadobe or you reach me. Whatever you can do that day, if there's any presentation you want to present, you want to pray on behalf of your state, let your state not be eh, or after you said that your state was not carried along. So please, it is important we do this so that every land, every part of the Biafran states will know that we are doing real something. I want to say, may God bless all of you. I am still eh, Wad Jesus. Eh, Stephen Wad Jesus. God bless all of you. Thank you.
Ndewo.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Good number, over to you.
Yes, so thank you so much, Honorable Minister for Information and Communication. Thank you, uh, right, Honorable APM Mazonge Kiri, thank you so much for your eh, Don Dros eh, uh, speech. Thank you so much. And eh, all the eh, the citizens of Anioma State and all the cabinets, thank you all. Um, once again, on behalf of eh, Ordinigugu States, I want to eh, support this speech of our APM with eh, ten thousand AJ, making everything fifty thousand AJ. And definitely, we pay tomorrow through Legos Liza. That will send the receipt. Thank you so much. And I want to say this to eh, all Biafrans, those in Biafranland, those in Biafranland, I want to tell you, if you are a coward, you are a display coward, it's better you drink your tapia pi and keme. If you're in Biafranland, you're displaying cowardice. You better you drink your tapia pi and keme and leave the roads, don't stand on our way. If you're displaying cowardice, I don't know where you headed it. Go where you headed it. No coward to be seen in our land. Enough is enough. Nde akaka. Nde akaka na, bana emba, nde akaka. Nde akaka na, bana emba, nde akaka.
Honorable, thank you very much, alright, good number. Honorable Minister, there's one of these song from Flavour, where they are showing muscle of how tough strong. We need to remind our people, you know, if we are strong, tough, we have to be tough. We have to be strong. We have to resist. We can't just be displaying how tough we are. Why the people, we are tougher than? Are raping our women, destroying our farm, just for, according to our leader Mazi, we come to a village and ransack a whole village. Please, eh, we need to, we need to remind our people. We need to remind, we need to reflect back. Growing up, my grandfather is a great hunter as well. We have a lot of lion, tiger skin. I saw that. Do we still have tough men like that in Biafranland today? Why are we showing weakness? It's unfortunate that eh, we find ourselves in the situation we are today. But we will overcome it. And we rewrite the book. If it is to rewrite our history, we will. If they want us to go as mad as crazy for us to be free, we will do it. Biafran people, we are not lazy. We are not coward, we are not stupid. But whatever that is holding some people back, please try overcome it. Get that fear out of you. Your enemy can do nothing. He can't. They are afraid of us. They are scared of us. That's why they come with terrorism and look at what they start learning for over decades. How to come to our land, how to destroy us. Because they know we are tough. Anioma people, thank you for this opportunity, we really appreciate. Please eh, do we still have some members of Ekume Ekku? We are on a day. They need to resurface and appear again. Let's activate Ekume Ekku. We started from Ekala last time. My fellow Biafrans, we love you all. We need to wake up and take this fight to our enemy. Please, thank you.
Thank you, APM, we have Isaac Demigayness, your hand is up, over to you, sir.
Thank you, my honorable Minister of Communication and Digital Technology. And I want to use this opportunity to panagiarize and to eulogize our acting Prime Plurivariant and Longitude speech in this evening. Because our people need to know that we are to liberate our people without much hesitation. I would like to support the Anioma people where you have Uzeobo Kaduna, the man that saw the tomorrow from the Nottingham hemisphere in what is happening or what was happening in that territory. And so the need for the people to protect themselves. I want to support the speech of our APM with a whooping sum of ten, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty, ninety, four hundred and twenty Ajima. So that our people will be liberated and the receipt will be sent immediately to the government. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Isaac Demigayness. Thank you so much, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Isaac Demigayness, thank you very much.
Thank you, the people of Anioma. We have come, we have seen, and we will tell the story. Hey hey hey. Alright, Willem Nikke, over to you, sir.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, thank you. And greetings to my APM. Greetings to all Biafrans. And um,
Willem Nikke, you can start your camera if you need your camera. Please, anyone that need camera can start camera now.
Okay, okay. Thank you, sir, thank you, sir.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, and greetings my APM, greetings to to all the Biafrans. Greetings to Anioma people. Greetings eh, eh, to our media. Eh, and Media Head Minister Saniya Power. I greet eh, all the Biafrans who are attending to this call. I tell you that um, if what my APM has been saying, if you haven't been listening, eh, then you are doing yourself a disfavor.
Sure.
You, you, you cannot be a slave forever. And you cannot be in fear forever.
Yeah.
There's a time and place for everything. So, those of you who enjoy being serving eh, the terrorist in Nigeria state,
Hmm.
Eh, it will end one day. It will end. And eh, I tell you that eh, the, the, those of us who are here supporting, we are, we are going through difficulties to support.
Yeah.
And we want, we are asking that just, we have seen the light, we have seen the way, and we have seen our leaders, eh, Mazi eh 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 eh, Nandekano, our Prime Minister Mazi Samanetba, they have shown us the way. What else do you need? What else do you need? Shed that fear, shed the shackles.
Hmm.
Alright? Stop saying, stop looking at other people and, and thinking their, 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 you know, eh, their, their praises. You can sing the praises of your, of our APM, right here, right here, now, talking.
Sure.
So come on on board and eh, and join, let's join hands and do this. And the Anioma people, I am thankful. I'm thankful that you, you, you are waking up and you have decided to invite our APM. And for that speech and other speeches APM has made and is calling us, please hear him and come on board. And I will use a hundred and fifty Ajima to support our APM in that call. Nde won.
Dalu.
And I'll send you the eh, the, the, the receipt eh, eh, Honorable Sani.
Thank you, thank you, Honorable Nikke.
Thank you, Honorable Willem Nikke, thank you.
Dalu.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you, Biafran people. The floor is still open, support APM speech, support Anioma State Town Hall Meeting, Isaac Carlo, over to you.
Good evening, Biafrans.
De.
Good evening, everybody. I wish to start by thanking the Anioma, people of Anioma, good people of Anioma. You have taken the booster today. I am by launching and starting your first eh, town hall meeting. Hosting the APM and the cabinet is a step in the right direction. I encourage you to continue eh, in what you have started. Eh, so wish to use the opportunity to greet the APM. In fact, that powerful speech is something else. I was talking about the last town hall meeting's powerful speech. Today's only just blew me off my feet. I must say thank you very much. And um, eh, wish to support the, that speech with a sum of five thousand AJ. Thank you very much.
Dalu.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Floor is open, the floor is open. Floor is open. Support Anioma State, support APM speech as we will be on the round up. Thank you to everyone. Yes, Minister Komford, your hand is up, over to you.
Yeah, I want to support my acting Prime Minister for his eloquent speech, for his thoughtful speech, for his encouraging speech for Anioma. So Anioma can come back again and again and again. We will support you. Thank you. With thirty, thirty Ajima.
Thank you.
No, that's it, that's it, um, what do you call it now? Euro, euros.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, my Bishop Komford. The only bishop, the real one, not all those fake, fake ones. Those who have questioned us, thank you.
Dalu.
Thank you, thank you. Yes, we have Mary, Mary, your hand is up, one meet yourself, over to you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, Kwarawa Sani, Abangite. Good evening, good evening, Information Minister, good evening. Good evening, our APM. Good evening, good evening, sir. Good evening, Anioma, Yafra, good evening. Greeting to all the lover of freedom, yes. Today. Yeah. Thank you, sir.
De.
Today, today evening, Anioma, oh, our APM, we can care about see. May God Almighty continue to give you the strength and, you know, the mercy. Continue to give you the grace, may the nature be with you. You know, that is what we pray for. And so shall he be, he say, he say. God love you and we love you too. We must give the God Almighty our own appreciation to give us, you for this kind of the time, the hard time, you know, the difficult time.
Hmm.
Ending is always, always difficult, sir. May God bless you. And we say, thank you, sir, thank you, Almighty God. Yes, Anioma, I want to support you people and our APM speech because it's important for us, yes. It make us strong, it make us, you know, wake up from where we sleep.
Hmm.
Yes, I will support with thirty euro for today with the speech so that it can buy a clis, one water, because it's not easy.
Hmm.
Thank you, sir, and I will pick eh, cola. I know I'm late.
Thank you very much, thank you.
For eh, twenty Ajima, that is eh, fifty Ajima. Thank you very, very much, Anioma, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Kwarawa, we send receipt to you tomorrow, thank you.
Thank you, Mary, thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Mary. Bishop Komford. Hey, ma.
You haven't been going to our platform, I've, I've been, I'm well.
Oh my, God bless, oh my goodness, you're welcome.
Thank you, my daughter, thank you so much, thank you.
Oh, mama, thank you, good evening, good evening, you're welcome.
Love you so much, love you, love you, love you.
You're welcome.
Dalu.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you for your support, and I keep supporting.
Jeseke, do down our heart yo, who will be afraid, Jeseke. We are proud of you, we are very, very grateful, Jeseke. He cannot forget all your sacrifice, no, no, Jeseke. La pa nyegi konse di, vi kan da namba, eh no go. We appreciate you. Yafra, appreciate you. We salute you. Yafra, the salute. We appreciate you. Yafra, appreciate you. We salute you. Yafra, the salute you. So, de wa ina ba na pozi yo ko. Yo, yo, yo. Yafra liberation army, Yafra defense force, Yafra marino, ndiye jaba cha. Yafra internationally, obuni kuwe batani am. Nini nene cheko bo da niyo, Jeseke. We cannot forget all your sacrifice, no, no, no. La pa nyegi konse di, vi kan da namba, eh no go. We appreciate you. Yafra, appreciate you. Yafra appreciate you, we salute you. Yafra salute you. We appreciate you. Yafra appreciate you, we salute you.
Yes, APM.
You know, we still need to make something clear to Biafrans. For somebody who claim, who want to be the leader of a free nation. Biafra that is fighting, struggle, struggling to liberate itself. My fellow citizens, my Biafran people. Ngazi Orabeze. The Sabotwa. Who have formed a paradi government. She don't know her village. She claims she is from Oga. Oga is an Aguata local government. And Ngazi Orabeze, she said, Oga is in. Epusigo local government. Hi. Abomination, the same woman. Claiming to be forty-six years old. She is over sixty years old. The same woman. Claiming to be from former Anambra State. And she still claim to be from former Enugu State.
Hmm hmm.
And you still have followers like our former lunatic. You still have followers like Diana Emi. Kamelunoke Aluwanwa. You still have followers like Ages. You still have followers like, wow, all her cabinet members.
Two four seven.
Lunatics.
Hmm.
Sabotwa. Ebenezer from Thessas, he, he say he's a reverend, fake reverend. Hypocrites. Pharisees. People that Jesus condemned. You have the one from Netherlands, what's his name, he says his name as apostle, why is all these reverend apostles are just fake ones? Thank God, we have one original one, Bishop Comfort, thank you. Thank you for, God bless you.
Thank you, sir.
And more than many. You will still have the few that are real.
Yes.
Just like this woman that don't know her local government at the age of fifty-seven years old.
Hmm.
All of a sudden, if please, if you know you're from Oga. I don't know if I'm right or wrong, is Oga in Epusigo Local Government? Or Oga is in Aguata Local Government? Uh, I remember. Please, anyone from Oga here, anyone familiar with the local government where. Oga belong to, please, can, please, can you comment on this? Please, uh, anyone familiar? Do I miss I'm right? So.
Yes, sir.
Aguata Local Government, right?
Aguata Local Government, not Epusigo. Aguata.
Ngazi Orabeze, she, she says Epusigo Local. Fake, that's how you know when people want to steal identity. When they want to lie, lie, liars. A woman. Who want to lead a struggle. She claimed she work hard, very, very hard. To form the forty state of Biafran, and she don't know the map. If she have the opportunity to be among nation. Or to present our map to the United Nations or the United States. She will present only her village map. She will not even present the accurate map. Before you know, she will present the map of Nigeria. Hey. Back to square one. And on her CV. She said, she said Nigerian and a Biafra. I can never be a Nigerian and a Biafra at the same time. I can only worship one God, one Tukwakike Abiyama. The God of Biafra. I can only be a Biafra, I believe all of us here, we only be Biafra.
Yeah.
She says she's a Nigerian. It's not funny. Months ago, she promised her gollyboy once.
Hmm.
She told him, she's making arrangement. Here in United States of America and Europe, and this in, uh, exclude Asia, so those of you following her from Middle East, from Asia country, you're on your own. She don't even have you in her agenda. She's only gonna catapult those that she made arrangement to fly back to Nigeria.
Yes, sir, yeah.
She will be flying in November. Diana Emi. Ebenezer. Uh, Aga. Mathpeace, Joshua the pig in Maryland. She will be flying these people back to Nigeria.
Oh.
But in our own time, we will fly our cabinet member, citizens back to Biafran land. And we fly them both from Europe. Asia, Middle East. All corner of the world. But Ngazi Orabeze only want to fly those from America and Europe back to her Nigeria. Thank God that you people from South Korea, Marzi Ogji, of course you see, you are not in her. Uh, lunatic, uh, paradi government, so you guys are not part of those that she already make arrangement to fly back. And, uh, there's this other man called, uh. Azu, Azubike, I believe that's, uh, her rep that live in Japan. But Ngazi Orabeze start making plans so you can fly those from Middle East, Asia country to back to your Nigeria.
Hmm hmm.
Then you people in Middle East. If you don't want to be in Ngazi flight back to Nigeria, because you guys are not coming to Biafran, she will land you in a Sambisa Forest.
Yeah.
Where the, where the Boko Haram are waiting for you. Maybe for, for those that are not yet married. They will be given to marriage. Those that have not yet been slaughtered, they will use your meat and tummy to sue you. Please. Get out from the flight of Ngazi Orabeze, the Jezebel. Before she will kill you all. Ngazi Orabeze don't know her local government, and she want to lead Biafra. Ngazi Orabeze don't know her state. She is from Enugu. And she's from Anambra.
Hmm.
She claims she's from Oga. Epusigo Local Government. And Oga. Is in Aguata Local Government.
Uh.
It confuse woman calling, it won't be well with her. And for her followers. You better get out and jump her from that sinking ship.
Sure.
We want you to be alive. A lot of you that are following her foolishly. You already sacrificed a lot. But.
Exactly.
Just a pity. And some of you just because you don't like. Marzi Ogjichunkere. This hatred did not start today.
Hmm.
When our leader Marzi Namdekanu is here, those that are chanting, chanting, championing or shouting Onyendu, Onyendu. You never like him. When our Prime Minister is here. Some don't like him because he's not from Anambra, or because he's not from Abia or Imo.
Hmm hmm.
Some just hate him because of his state or because of where he from. Or because of how he speak. Some are just jealous of him. Because they can't do what he's doing, some are just jealous. Because they don't want him to be the one that bring Biafra.
Hmm.
And today. Some don't like me because they don't like the way I speak my English. They don't like the way I reason.
Hmm.
They don't like the way I talk. Some are just jealous because they see me going to Washington every day.
Hmm.
Some are just jealous. Why is he the one going to Washington?
Oh, yes.
Why is he the one in charge of, of our office in DC?
Hmm.
Why is he the one, the Finance Minister? Why is him this or that? When God position you. To serve his people.
No, man.
It don't matter. It don't matter what position you are. When God position you and send you a message. Go that message. If God position me to do what I'm doing today, so be it. We read in the Bible about Joseph. When the Israelites experienced famine. Joseph was sold to slavery in Egypt. And Joseph was positioned to save the people of Israelites from famine season. And he come to pass. If God have position me for this journey. I fear no evil, so help me God. I fear no one. And we do that, that is just right.
Amen.
Whether you like it or not. If you think you can stop me, you can't.
No way.
You don't like what I'm doing, if you can repent from your evil ways.
Get out of the way.
Lagoon available. Go and jump inside that lagoon and say bye bye to this beautiful world.
Sure.
Because we fight and restore Biafra, and Biafra will compete among nations.
Yeah.
Biafra will compete, and the United States of America will be glad. Glad they have a country like Biafra.
Sure.
Some from this great country, they will take a trip to Biafran for their vacation holidays. Just somewhere, they take trip to Dubai. When Dubai was desert over sixty, seventy years ago. No one talk about Dubai. But today, people all around the world travel far and wide to Dubai. Celebrity spend millions, billions of money there.
Yeah.
Time is coming. When people all over the world will travel to Biafran. Because Biafra will provide security, Biafran will show hospitality and love to everyone that will come to Biafran. To do business. To mingle with us. It will be livable, it will be full of life, joy, where people will be singing praises. Where there will be no terrorists. Where will be no shitima.
Hmm hmm.
Where there will be no Tunubu or Basanjou.
Hmm.
All these terrorists by then have gone. Will get our land back.
Hmm.
Thank you, my fellow Biafrans, please do the right thing by supporting your freedom, freedom is so sweet. And you cannot buy freedom. With any amount of money.
No.
But you can use money to get yourself free. When you are free and free at last. Your children, your generation will be proud of Biafran to call home. Your children all over the world with their mommy, daddy. They can wait for the summer holidays so they can go to Biafra.
Yes.
So they can enjoy the good food coming from Biafra. They can enjoy the kosher. The kosher coming from a cowland, from an animal land, the display with many colors. They can enjoy the, enjoy the, the sound of the music and the clothing. From the Abibio. The dance, the step, the masquerade of the Biafran people. With different name, colors, they want to go home. To enjoy. What Biafran have to offer.
Hmm.
We cannot allow these terrorists to overrun us.
Never.
Allow them. To mess our dream up. Our dream as who we are is already been destined.
Hmm hmm.
We enjoy it once upon a time. Because of our kindness, because of our hospitality.
Hmm hmm.
They deceive us. And we have learned from our mistake. This time around, we'll be careful. We will know who will dine and when we. We will vet whoever that is coming to our land.
Yeah.
And at that time, it will be Biafra first. Just like the same way it is here in America. America first.
Yeah.
It will be Biafra first. Before. Any other country or before any other one. Whoever that are coming to do business with us. Must align with us, must have a fair handshake with us.
Yeah.
Yes. Must be something that would benefit the Biafran people. You can't come and do business and rip us off, just like the Great Britain, the criminals. That have come to make us dry.
Yeah.
The same region where they make dry. Instead of them having a fair handshake with us. And have alliance with us, they decide to have alliance with our enemy.
Yeah.
Instead of them helping to develop our area. And we also actually have the same religion, if not fifty, fifty or over eighty percent.
Hmm hmm.
But they are the same people killing us.
Hmm.
Shame to them. If they don't repent from their evil ways, their land will be overrun. From Manchester to Arsenal to Liverpool, will be overrun. Their place will be uncomfortable for them. Their place, their land will be worse than third world country.
Yeah.
That is the mess they have brought to themselves. My fellow Biafrans, support your freedom. Please cut every path that need to go far and wide. For those that have ear. Let them hear. Please, thank you.
Sir.
Thank you, APM, is academic kindness, your hand is up, is academic kindness.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Loud and clear.
Yeah, yeah, uh, just as you said before, our people need to understand. That the clarion call is for us to salvage ourselves. And your my people are highly welcome under the Biafran Republic government in exile.
Yeah.
And the word of our Prime Minister. Who is represented in this Accotemporalis, this time, by the Acting Prime Minister.
Yeah.
His Excellency Marzi Ogjichunkere. Is supported in its completeness, what you call food. And, uh, with the cost of characteria. With the whooping sum of thirty Ajma, which is called dollars.
Yes.
To add to complement what we're saying, and I want anybody who want to challenge his academic kindness to support. You know, the words of our Acting Prime Minister. And if you don't support, I will increase it to the highest level. God bless you in the classic Lord. Amen.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, academic kindness.
Thank you, is academic kindness, uh, good number, your hand is up. Is that one?
I think, I just want to remind our people that the terrorist spokesperson and radicalize actually Gumi was deported from Saudi Arabia. So that you will not radicalize their people. Terrorist Gumi deported from Saudi Arabia.
Thank you, good number, you know, I was like asking the question, is, um. Um, with, uh, our honorable Emileka, go ahead first, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, uh, Honorable Sunny. I, uh. I like the spirit of academic, his academic kindness. And, uh. I, I am also saying that this lone voice you are hearing. Belonging to our APM, it will not go out in vain, I'm telling you right now. Because everything that he has just said. They are not just true.
Yeah.
But they are going to be the, the same words. That you've been, you know, that you've been hearing, and you will hear from those who want to lie to you, to cheat you, to deceive you. Ask yourself, in, in, since nineteen seventy, what has Nigeria done for you?
Hmm.
If not sending you liars.
Yeah.
And what they call four one lines.
Yeah.
So. It's very rare to see somebody who tells you the truth and comes along and tells you, say, this is the way.
Hmm.
And so. And so if you are hearing this voice from our APM and you are not paying attention, oh, I pity you. Because it, it, it won't be too long, it won't be long at all. Okay, so with that, with that challenge, uh, his highness made, um, um, I will also add a fifty ejeema, bringing it to two hundred ejeema. And I plead you, I plead, I plead to all of you to hear APM's voice.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you, our honorable rep. Thank you and thank you everyone. You know, when I saw Saudi Arabia, I said, they deported the minister of Boko Haram. I was like, is Saudi Arabia not a part of the clique? I was like, wow. Wow, are they not part of the clique or are they trying to play some kind of a lone game here? Because there is this takaia, there is this takaia game that every one of them will always say, they don't imbibe with the part of their book that says, uh, cut human head, cut a human body, uh, cut the inferior. That is how someone will come and say they don't agree to that part in there. But when you say the war is here for them to fight, all of them, they will come in unison to fight.
Yes, yes.
I'm still asking the question to understand. Minister Comfort, your hand is up, over to you.
I add twenty, twenty euros from you. Tonight is a special night, add twenty euros.
Thank you, thank you, Mister Comfort.
Thank you, thank you, Martin Prime Minister, thank you.
Thank you, his academic kindness, over to your hand is up.
Yeah, can you hear me, my brothers?
Yes, we can hear you, sir.
I wanted to answer the question concerning the deportation and the rejection of Sheikh Gumi, an Islamic, uh, you know, cleric, uh, noticed in the Zoological Republic, otherwise known as Nigeria, from the United Arab Emirates. I wanted to respond to our people, the reason why they deported him is because he is a Mujahid Arab. Mujahid Arab. Our people need to understand the Arabic terminology. Mujahid, Alahaji, Aljihah. These are words meant for the African Mumu people who converted to Islam. Sheikh Gumi thought that he's Islamist. But he does not understand that he's not Arabic. He is supposed to be African, but unfortunately, he's not African. He is Mujahid Arab. Mujahid Arab means in conventional language, those people that have been used for the conquest of black race. Black man used for the conquest of black man. So when they give the title, Alahaji, it does not reflect to Arabs or protagonism in Arabism. But it reflects to Africans that are being used for the conquest of fellow Africans, or better to say, in the case of this Sheikh Gumi. The gypsies that are being used for the conquest of Africa. So when he went there, they told him, go back with your morality, with your mongries, with your stupidity, with your charcutocracy, with your old manners of stupidity. That is the reason and why they cannot get it right. So Sheikh, Sheikh, that is the etymology. It's not attributed to people that are not Arab. Sheikh is not attributed to people that are not Arab. So you black man calling yourself Sheikh, you are not Sheikh. But you are Mujahid Arab. Meaning a slave man that is used to conquer the people of the conquest. Thank you very much, honorable.
Thank you.
Thank you, his academic kindness. Uh, this, this also takes us, um, back to when, um, a CNN analyst was asked why uh, American government and the UK and the West only concern about, um, massacres in where there are white flesh. And then you guys are not concerned about the massacre of Christians by Boko Haram in Nigeria. They said, um, their lives are no priority because they are blacks. If it, if it were to happen in the white, the white flesh complexion, the American government would have taken it seriously, the West would have taken it very seriously. So this drives us back to, this drives us back to the invitation of a president of South Africa by Donald Trump to, to the White House. There had been a series of massacres in Africa of the black people, yes, by the terrorists which the West sponsors, uh huh, in proxy. But we have not seen them call up all the leaders of Africa to come and answer why they are killing the blacks. Uh huh, but just a little glitch of a song chanting. And then they do media outrage everywhere and say it is about the white that they are killing. The president of the world could summon the president of South Africa and say, come and answer why the whites are being pillaged. Imagine that. So that is why, to connect with what APM said, the West will not come and fight your war for you. You will do the fighting, you have to take the stand, you have to take the decision, you have to take the bull by the horn, you have to crush the enemy. Until when you create a sin, that is when you move to come in. If Julius Malima did not create a sin with the son that is sad and all of his actions calling against imperialists, would there have been a point of order where the president of the world would now have to look at his issue? Biafran people, you must create a sin in Nigeria so that the entire world will look at your issues. And that is where we, we must continue. We thank everyone. Nenaya Okereke, your hand is up, over to you.
Good evening, all. In the house of protocol observed. I'm supporting today's event with fifty ejeema. Thank you, all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sunny, I will send the receipt immediately to you.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, the people of, um, Anoma have done it again. And we have enjoyed everything here in Anoma State. We enjoy it in the spirit, we enjoy it in the physical, and we enjoy in the ancient. And we enjoy in anticipation of seeing you all in Biafran land. Like our PM said, after the declaration of United States of Biafran Restoration of Independence on second December, do not expect miracle overnight. We have many years to fight this war until we are fully liberated. We have to delegitimize completely the existence of Nigerian terrorist occupational existence in Biafran land. And thereby legitimizing our United States of Biafran Restoration and recognition. So we have a lot of work to do. And it's not something that you have to do overnight. It takes process.
Yes.
So do not be, uh, derailed by those that say they don't see magic overnight after the declaration of Biafran. Because they do not understand how things works. They want to sit on defense to make everything happen without contributing any effort. Rather, the only thing they will contribute is energy of tearing apart. So we don't need those kind of negative energies. We need positive energies because as we speak to you, the Biafran Defense Forces are in the battlefield. That process of delegitimization of one Nigeria existence so that we can legitimize the Biafran existence in the homeland. So tighten up your belt because it's not gonna be easy. It's gonna be tough, but as it gets tougher, you have to brainstorm. And know that tough situations need men with strong balls, men with strong mind, men that can stand the test of time, not fickle minded fellows that cannot take decisions and stand. Our decision is ever going back and never. Ever going, 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 ever going, ever going. Do not allow anybody to destroy what you have put on the table before now. Because you have worked so hard to come this far. Many Biafrans have died. So we are ever going and never going back to one Nigeria. We continue to go forward, we don't go back to Nigeria. Because Nigeria is not our name, Biafran is our name. And we continue on the ever and ever and ever Biafran. Want to say very big thank you to everyone who have done in and their contributions, well appreciated. And Yorima people loves you so much for what you've done today. And we want to see more of the Anomans, yes. Don't know if the SA is still here to give, um, their vote of thanks as, um, we wrap up, please.
I, I know my, uh, essay is left. I would just say on behalf of my older brother, our SA of Anoma, Dalu No Biafran. Thank you very much for coming to support us on our first town hall meeting with our honorable APM. We really appreciate, Anoma has made its little representation today. In the Anoma, all around the world, we are here, we are Biafrans. Remember the spirit of Ekumeko. Minister of Information, thank you very much for all the help, Dalu, ndewo. Just thinking of.
Thank you, thank you to everyone. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, and see you all. Thank you, thank you.